So he's got, I think he's...
You get to live one night long, right?
You get a lot of... You're growing your city in Chippie. You bring it down. These cities, we go in some cities now. You know, the interior, sir. Ten years ago.
See you, brother.
Yeah, Jim. That was every day.
Three, five, six.
Yeah.
Yes.
I know, that's the thing, if you want or if you don't, you can do both.
Yeah.
For the Royal Oak Review, and I'm just, you know, covering it. Sorry to interrupt, but I was just wondering if it's okay when the public is speaking, if I speak?
Yeah, you can take any pictures.
Every other reporter does it.
I just didn't want to interrupt.
Only because you have that official badge. No, I know. You're not taking pictures with my left nostril.
And because you ask nicely.
Yeah. You're already the only one that comes up in that direction.
Like me to push the emergency button and you to get tackled by a swat?
Well, thank you so much.
No, you're welcome. So that was one of the reasons we renewed our grant.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Now is the time and place set for the April regular meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission. Welcome, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll put our appearance on the record, starting with this Beaky.
Anne Beaky, good evening.
Hi, Ms. Ford.
Charlon Douglas, City Commissioner.
Joseph Murphy, Director of Planning.
Josh Markham, City Attorney's Office.
Woody Gontina.
Jim Ellison.
Mike Fournier, Mayor.
And I'm Gary Cusson, the chairperson. All right. The first order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes from the March 12th meeting. Have the commissioners had a chance to look at these minutes, review them? Is there any questions, comments, corrections, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to... I'll make a motion to approve as submitted by staff.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Gontina. Any further discussion on the approval of the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Impose, none? Motion is passed. Meeting minutes are approved. Okay. Before we go any further, does any of the commissioners, staff, or council need to add anything to the agenda tonight? All right. Seeing none, I will start into the public comment, but I think that we... I'd like to ask a question of our Planning Department here. So this is a case in which we have a couple of items on here. One is a public hearing and one is not listed as a public hearing, that's number two. And we've had this discussion before, that do we want people... I'm just getting the sense of the committee here. Do we want people to speak who are here to speak about the second item, the Beaumont, when it comes up? Or do we want them to speak now if they're...
Well, I think that would be beneficial, since our typical process is to hear the presentation by staff, ask staff questions, hear the presentation by the proposer, ask them questions, and then hold a public hearing. And at that point, people will have heard what is proposed and can respond, if perhaps, more appropriately.
All right. That sounds sensible to me. Are there other comments? Mr. Ellison?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Ms. Douglas. I'd rather us and the audience hear the presentation from the petitioner, so that we and they can formulate their questions. But to come up here and start asking questions about things that they think they know but they don't know, because of change, I think it's a big waste of everybody's time. So if we could have the presentation and then go into the public comment. All right. The way we normally do it is we have the presentation, it'll come back to this side of the table, we ask our few questions, and then we open up for public comment.
Okay. Again, that sounds sensible.
I'd make that motion if we can do that.
That sounds sensible to me. I don't think we need a motion for that, do we? Okay. So let me address this to the audience here. So the reason, obviously, we're bringing this up is I suspect that some of you here are to talk about the Corwell Beaumont project. Maybe I'm wrong about that. Can I... Yeah, I can see a show of hands of who is here to speak about the Beaumont project. Okay. So here's what we'd like to do. Well, the other one is a public hearing, so we know that... So here's what we'd like to do, we just talked about here. Normally, because it's not a public hearing, you might have to come up and speak at the public comment part of the meeting. But we're going to move the part of the public comment on the Beaumont site plan until the Beaumont site plan is before us and you've heard the presentation. I hope that's cool with everybody. So, I'm going to open the...
You probably need a motion on that, because you're basically moving to the public comment, or are you...
I'm only moving part of it. Because the next part is we're going to have public comment. So at this point in time, anybody who wants to speak on a non-agenda item, in other words, not Rochester Road, not Corwell, now is the time to come forward. And you have the floor. Anybody who wants to speak on something that's not on our agenda, please raise your hand or come up. Come on up.
I actually want to speak on an agenda item, but I've got a bedtime. Could I have... I'll take very little time.
Yes, you may. Come on up. And introduce both of you. It just helps pay our attendance, that's all.
Thank you for making this exception for me. Thank you to everyone in front of me here for performing a very valuable community service. I know it's a very valuable thing you do, and I appreciate it. And I'd just like to preface my comments by saying that I'm a big supporter of this body during my time as a resident in Royal Oak. Special thanks to former Mayor Ellison and Mayor Fournier. I think you guys have done a fantastic job. I'm just going to make some brief comments about the Rochester Road project. Weston and I are residents of Genesee Avenue. The traffic situation on Genesee Avenue has been horrible since I moved onto the block in 2013. We have a serious issue with traffic northbound on Campbell, cutting the light to go westbound on 14. And I've made comments before this body in the past that ultimately resulted in a traffic study being done. And the numbers from that study, and this was back even before Midtown Point, were quite remarkable. I mean, it was well north of 500 cars daily on Genesee, which is remarkable considering how small our block is. There's only like 30 houses on our block. Between 7:00 AM... Sorry, buddy. Between 7:00 AM and 10:00 AM, just about every weekday morning, and then also from about 3:30 to 6:30 PM every weekday evening, there are cars flying down our street. There is no law enforcement whatsoever. I did get the police one time to come. They wrote like three tickets back-to-back-to-back in one day, and I never saw them again. So when I think about this project coming in on the west end of the block, I can't imagine anybody wants it. And we have tons of kids on our block. I mean, just in properties adjacent to mine. There's seven, eight kids that are all within a couple of years' age of Weston here, and they play. I mean, they play hockey, they run around, they throw balls. And meanwhile, we have to put out markers and dummy children holding flags like plastic, basically warnings to traffic. It goes unheeded, and it's becoming uninhabitable. And it's a point where my wife and I... I mean, if this project goes through, I think very seriously, we very likely could put our house up for rent and just move. Because we can't... We're not going to raise children on this block with this traffic situation. So I don't care what the folks here have to say about what they're presenting. I think there's got to be alternatives available for that parcel. I mean, you could put some houses there, commercial options. But another apartment complex, when we already absorbed one in our neighborhood just a few years back with Midtown Point, is unacceptable. And anyone who votes to approve such a petition on this body is throwing away the best interests of your existing residents there. But in whole, I want to, again, thank everybody for what you're doing in this committee, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on a non-agenda item or has a bedtime?
Before you start the clock, I'm an insomniac, so... But my name is Nancy Poprovsky. Thanks for listening. At almost all commission meetings, when a developer is promoting apartments, they won't reveal unit rental fees. Last night at the City Commission meeting, this happened again. The words "moderate" and "pretty reasonable" were used. Out of respect for the commission and public, at tonight's public hearing for Rochester Road, would the developer share the rent price? This is important for an informed vote. The commission needs to know what affordable means. Affordable to whom? Affordable subsidy program? Affordable housing for some, or rent equal to most rents in Royal Oak, which can be expensive? At many commission meetings, we keep hearing how affordable housing must come to Royal Oak. In reality, we are experiencing some developers' rent prices going higher. Some people are privileged, and developers seem to think that by giving the public so-called affordable housing, they should automatically love it. If you are privileged and can pick where you live, do you think it's fair to expect that a hard-working, economically-challenged, single parent with three children would love being crammed into a 600-square-foot project apartment with no green space, smack dab at the curb, and no place for their kids to play? Possibly affordable, ugly, isolated, tiny, and dense projects, if subsidized, can shadow the demeaning projects of the '60s? If the city really puts their affordable hearts where their mouths are, please put a moratorium on bulldozing all the starter homes in Royal Oak, so people can have affordable dignity. They want it. To the neighbors near the Rochester Road project who want to stay or age in place, if the developer takes away quiet, unobstructed streets, an unblocked view of sunrise, sunset, full moon, or just beautiful blue sky, is that what they bought into? They have lived by a one-story bank next door that will turn into a dense monster Bigfoot, blocking all views, all to please the developer. What is so ironic, while reading about the perks for the project, it states to the prospective renter, "Large windows, sliding doors in each unit for natural light and fresh air." So the new renter will have a great view of the tree neighborhood, and the longtime neighborhood residents will now have a blocked view with an ugly monster Bigfoot. Not a fair trade-off. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. That was an agenda item. So what I'm looking for is non-agenda items. All right. Non-agenda items. Anybody else? Right here.
I'm assuming it's not, because it was an addition that's talking about the master plan. So that was on the other sheets. Okay.
Please proceed.
Phyllis Salter. On the first page of Draft Two, it says, "Considering rules for allowing accessory dwelling units that would be compatible with neighborhood character and privacy concerns." Obviously, we don't have acreage sites like farms that would offset these structures. Due to the advantage of average site size here, the structure can be ending up at the neighbor's fence. There goes their privacy, a major requirement for residents. It was also mentioned in a previous meeting, the city would not be involved in these structurals. No need to get a variance there. What do you do to be considered compatible? Additionally, our interior streets appear to be increasingly crowded now, resulting in difficulty in passing the oncoming cars. Unfortunately, cars parked on driveways and the streets are invitations to those who steal our cars or the major parts, which is happening here. Regarding the summary of the Charlotte... charrette... I never got that right. Input attached to the agenda. There were several speakers to us during the charrette, most of which were from DPZ and representative of Royal Oak in a couple of cities. I thought we were going to get information. Unfortunately, the time for input was very limited once the speakers were finished. One morning, there was zero opportunity for input, as the speakers spent 100% on pure statistics. As for the videos, some were likely turned off due to an encounter and also before the questions were finished by us during the morning and the night. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Non-agenda items. Anyone else like to speak before we move on to the agenda? All right. Seeing none, we will move to the agenda. This is new business. We'll start with the public hearing of rezoning from mixed-use two to planned unit development. This is SP 240404. Mr. Murphy, please introduce us.
This is a one-and-a-half-acre site on Rochester Road. It's just south of 14 Mile Road, and it was formerly a financial institution with a drive-thru. It's in the mixed-use-two zoning district. The petitioner has elected to choose the planned unit development process as an alternative route of approval. And so PUDs must demonstrate compliance with some specific criteria outlined in the zoning ordinance. And the petitioner has provided a written statement with regard to the criteria. They can elaborate on those a little bit further when they conduct their presentation. Petitioners proposing an L-shaped building, as you can see on the screen in front of you. It's three-and-a-half stories in height along Rochester Road, and the leg that wraps along Genesee is three stories in height. There'd be 42 units, 35 of those are one-bedroom, and seven are two-bedroom. The existing zoning district allows for 16 units on the site. Again, the petitioner is proposing 42. They're looking to provide 79 parking spaces behind the building, accessed off of Genesee as well as the adjacent public alley. And staff had suggested to them that was a possibility of them using the alleyway as access versus having an additional driveway, be it on Genesee or on Rochester Road. 84 parking spaces would normally be required for 42 units, so equating to two parking spaces per unit. They're proposing less than that, right around 1.8, 1.9, something of that nature. The east property line is adjacent to a single-family neighborhood, and I'll hover over on the screen. The parking lot extends close to the adjacent property, a single-family property, and it's separated, that parking lot is separated from the adjacent neighborhood by a landscape buffer and a masonry screening wall. The building itself, at its closest point, and again, I'll hover over that, closest point along Genesee is 89.3 feet from the nearest single-family property, the adjacent property. A maximum height of 36 feet is allowable in the mixed-use-two zoning district. The proposal measures 40 and a half feet along the west wing of the building where there are dormers. You'll see those, I'll hover over them. And the other leg of the building, the south wing, is at the maximum height of 36 feet. There are four large, or four mature trees along Genesee that will remain. Four trees will be removed. They equate to 78 total inches. The petitioner is proposing to, via their landscape plan, they're proposing 34 new trees, which, when they're planted, equate to 87 inches. So they go above and beyond the total number of inches being removed with what they're planting. The proposal does deviate from various provisions in the zoning ordinance, specifically lot size and density, as well as the number of parking spaces, the building height, the primary entrances that should front along the adjacent streets of Rochester and Genesee. They're asking for preliminary planned unit development approval. You do have the ability, if you choose, to grant them preliminary, which allows them six months to make any modifications and come back for your final recommendation on final approval. Or alternatively, if you feel comfortable with what they proposed with contingencies, you can suggest, or rather, you can approve it as presented as final PUD. And then at that point, it will go to the city commission for a first reading and ultimately a second reading, since it's an amendment to the city zoning ordinance. I will note that back in 2019, the planning commission did approve a three-story mixed-use building with 24 units. And they did need variances from the zoning board appeals via the approval process they chose. At that juncture, the zoning board appeals did deny that request. The petitioner is seeking a planned unit development, different approval process.
All right. And just real quick, I always get confused on this. This is a PUD, so is this one vote or two? Because we can vote to recommend the zoning change in the preliminary plan in one fell swoop, or is that usually two motions that you like to see? Or council can begin it?
Two. There would be, there's a suggestion motion in your, in the packet with regard to the site plan, and let's take a look at it. So as noted on page eight, there's a suggested recommendations, again, whether you approve preliminary or final, followed by an actual recommended motion, which would be starting on page nine, should you wish to consider it as approved today as a preliminary or final. There's two different motions.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Murphy before we ask the petitioner to come forward? Mr. Murphy?
We need to get a clarification here on our zoning ordinances. Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Just to get some clarity on our ordinance, mixed-use-two, it says permitted uses. Our neighborhood business zoning is permitted in the mixed-use-two? That's my understanding, Mr. Murphy, as it is today?
Certain uses in the neighborhood business zoning district. So the mixed-use-two zoning district does allow for a wide variety of land uses, including multifamily.
Yeah. But I'm saying that when it says permitted uses, office zone, neighborhood business zone, that means that whatever's allowed in those zones are permitted unless they're listed as a special use. Okay. I just want to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Murphy? All right. I'm going to ask the petitioners to come forward, bring your team up, introduce yourself, tell us why you're entitled and the relief you seek, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. My name is Dennis Cowan. I am representing this evening the applicant, Trowbridge Home Construction, and I want to introduce our team. First, Tony and Anthony Randazzo, who are the principals of the company. Also, Jason Krieger, our architect of record here with Royal Oak-based Krieger-Clatt. And also Jacob Swanson, who's a resident, who is with Fleece. And Vandenbrink, who conducted the parking study that we forwarded to you along with our other materials. I'm very pleased to be here on behalf of what we consider to be an outstanding project on a long vacant site on Rochester Road, south of 14 Mile Road. And I think one thing we've all learned as, with respect to these types of sites, is the worst thing for the city and for the residents, both residential and commercial, is to have a vacant and underutilized property. It raises too many questions about both commercial and residential neighbors or people who want to move to that area. What is going to go there? We believe we have the proper solution. As has been mentioned, mixed-use has a wide variety of uses, and this property has been available, I believe, for over a decade. And there's only been two takers. There's been all this opportunity, but only two takers. The first was mentioned five years ago in July of 2019. The planning commission approved a three-story project, including two stories of multifamily residential. Law was approved here, four to one. Unfortunately, the zoning board did not grant a waiver, which is needed in order to construct the project, and as a result, that project did not go through. The second project is the Trowbridge project. I believe that this is an excellent and thoughtful design. It incorporates many amenities for our tenants, which I think Mr. Krieger will talk about in a minute. It's always been the protocol of the Randazos and their company, Trowbridge, to be good neighbors. They've built numerous multifamily and subdivisions and have had very good relations with their neighbors. So we invited on February 15th all the individuals who would receive notice to a meeting at the Royal Oak Senior Center. We had about 30 residents, which was a very good turnout, and we had healthy exchange. I don't mind telling you, most of the people opposed the project. But there were some good suggestions, and we took those to heart. Instead of racing here in February, we postponed the meeting, and we changed the project. We reduced the number of units from 48 to 42. We increased the parking from 66 to 79, which is about a 20% increase. That gives us a ratio of 1.88 parking spaces per unit. The study, the parking study that I mentioned earlier that you have been given confirms that this is more than adequate parking under the rules and regulations that those who do parking studies follow. We also locked off part of the Genesee L, so to speak, and moved the building 16 feet farther away to about 90 feet from the eastern property line, which is the nearest residential property. Also was added on the corner of Genesee and Rochester is a small, but I think important feature, and that is a park-like setting and also an opportunity for public art at that location. Now, while I know, and the Randazos know, this was not everything the neighbors wanted, we believe it was more than a good faith effort to show that we listened and that we made changes. This project has numerous community benefits, which I outlined in a letter to you. They are both environmental and otherwise. Just a couple important ones. The public art features that I just mentioned. We have 14 ground-level units that will be accessible for those with mobility challenges, which is an important feature these days. As Mr. Murphy mentioned, we're not clear-cutting the site. We're saving four large, mature trees on the southern part of the property. We also have, and I think this is an important feature, packaged heating and cooling systems for each unit. And what that means is we'll eliminate the need for the unsightly and noisy HVAC units on the top. So residents won't see or hear the normal type of noise that you get from HVAC units on top of the building. And finally, something that is not on the plans, but we commit to tonight, is to install five EV electrical vehicle chargers on the property. So we have, we believe we have met the, both the PUD and the density requirements. I've had an attachment to the letter I gave detailing those requirements and our compliance with them, and I'll be glad to go into some detail later. But at this time, I would like to turn over the podium to Mr. Krieger and let him walk through the site plan in more detail. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Jason Krieger with Krieger-Clatt Architects, 400 East Lincoln, Royal Oak, Michigan's our business address. So I'm going to walk you through the proposed project. Mr. Murphy, could you please maybe start the site plan? Thank you for going through the portions that you went through. I'll try not to be redundant, but I'll go through the site plan, the floor plans, the elevations, and some of the renderings to just better explain the project to everybody. So as mentioned, it's an L-shaped building, it's three-and-a-half stories. So we say three-and-a-half stories, you have one, two, the third level has a loft, and that's the dormers that you're going to see on the renderings. What that allowed us to do is keep the building as low as we could, but also keep the mix that the owners wanted. We pushed the building as far to Rochester Road as we could in order to keep away from the single-family residential. We also think that it creates a great building line along the street, and we use a lot of high-end materials and deep fenestrations, which we'll point out. One thing that I definitely want to mention is that the Randazos are long-term holders of their properties. They've owned their properties for, you know, many, many years, where they look forward to handing it off to grandchildren, children, et cetera. We're doing a project with them right now at the corner of Sixth in Troy. It's called Hazelton. And if you were to drive by, you'd see it's almost all brick. They love the material, because once you put it up, you don't really have to touch it. So they tend to overspend on their buildings, and I think that's a good thing. And I think we all should. I'm also a resident in Royal Oak. I don't live very far from here, so it's good to see a good quality product go up. As mentioned, we're coming in off of the alley. We eliminated two entrances off of Rochester Road. So the alley is to the north, is 20 feet wide, which meets the standards for the Sierra River two-way traffic. We also have an entrance coming in off of Genesee. And the idea is that you could circulate around the back of the building, and that also works for trash. Our proposed location for the dumpster enclosure is in the northeast corner. It would be screened with masonry wall as well as landscaping. On the next slide, which we'll get to in a second, we cluttered in the additional trees and shrubs that were added based off of some comments. The rest of the circulation loops like a donut through the middle of the site. One thing that we really like, and I think this is different than the initial design, is that we hid all the parking behind the building, so that it's not seen from Rochester Road. We hid the majority of it from Genesee. A comment that was brought up, which we're more than willing to comply with, is providing screening along Genesee. We think we can do that with some shrubs and bushes in order to block cars from the parking lot, from the folks, anybody going by on Genesee. There is an existing masonry screen wall along the east that kind of staggers. It starts out pretty low, about four feet or so, and then steps up as you go towards the north. We're going to extend that and raise it up, so six feet across the whole length of the site. And then there's also an existing, it's a concrete, I should say, screen wall on the north that shields this site, used to be the bank site, from the businesses to the north. We're proposing to keep that concrete screen wall, however, cut an opening where the driveway is proposed, right, right there. One thing to point out is that the entrances for the units are all off the parking lot. We do have balconies and windows that are along Rochester and Genesee, so folks, kids still go out and enjoy an outdoor space. As mentioned, we have a pocket park that's proposed along the southwest corner. This design is just about there. What we want to do is hopefully, if this moves forward, speak with some local artists and look at a way to incorporate that and do something wonderful there on the corner. The rest of it, we are proposing as much landscaping as we can fit on the site to green it up. Next slide, please. Next slide. So this is our architectural site plan. The clouded area just represents the revisions that we made since the first submission. So we're adding more trees and bushes. And we also added the arborvitae on the inside, on our side of the property, along the existing screen wall. So the neighbors to the east will have a taller fence or wall plus the arborvitae in front of it. Next slide, please. So the next, I think, is four slides. There are aerial views of the building. You could see the three-story portion that's on the right in front of you. That was reduced. That was taller before. And then along Rochester Road, we have the three-and-a-half stories. So if we look here really quick, I just want to point this out. The way that you access the units, it's kind of like an open walkway that's on the, be on the backside, and that's how folks would get into their units. And what you could see is this building is all brick. We do have a band of cast stone, and then we would do different brick detailing on the facade to break it up. Maybe go to the floor plans, Joe. Okay. So this is the first floor, and they pretty much match as you go up. You can see the doors that are, that face the parking lot. That's how you enter the unit. And then if you look towards Rochester or Genesee, you'll see that there's indentations. Those are door walls, so that the residents can go out and sit on their patio. To the side of that door wall, that's where the bedrooms would be. So on the one side, you have the VTAC unit, which is what Dennis mentioned, which is the heating and cooling for the unit. On the other side, you have a bedroom. So this building is an all-electric building, which is pretty standard nowadays, and it's just, it's more energy efficient, and it's becoming more and more standard. We also have integrated storage rooms on the ground floor. Go up to the next floor. Like I said, they're pretty similar as they go up. That looks to me a little yellowish area, that's of the walkway. So you can walk up the stairs, and then you can go into your individual unit. All right, next one. So you can see those are the lofts or the So you can see those are the lofts or the, the three, that's the three and a half. So you'd go up the stairs, you'd have a loft space with the bathroom. That's why we're calling it a two-bedroom, because you could use it as a bedroom if you wanted to. Next slide. So I think next we have some exterior elevations, which we've touched on. You can see the door walls there on the ground floor, and then they track all the way up. So those are fenced in right now. The idea is to create a nice, safe, secure space for somebody to sit out there. We do like the idea of it being enclosed. There's a passive security measure where it not only makes people feel safer, but it deters anybody from walking up to the unit from the street. Next. And that's the open area in the back, how you get up into the units. Next slide. And then we have the renderings. So you could see the, there, as Joseph already showed you. We have the corner park on the lower right, and again, high-quality materials, metal steel windows, all masonry. And then I think the only thing that I just want to make, make clear, I was looking at my notes of things to touch base on, is we keep calling it the public alley to the north. That alleyway, the parking lot, and the access out to Fourteen Mile, that's all, that's all public property, right away. So it's not owned by anybody other than the city. That's why there's a cut through there. So.
All right. Are there questions?
Any questions?
Questions for the petitioner's architect here? I got a quick one. You mentioned that you wanted to get the mix of one and two bedrooms that the, that the owner wanted. Was, was there a market study done of some type that the owner studied what, what the market is looking for at this point?
I can let them answer, but I'll be honest, after working with them on several projects now, I think it's from doing it for thirty-five or forty years, they sort of know, they sort of know what they want to do, so. Is that, is that a first statement?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. And did you consider doing a traffic study?
We did a parking study, but not a traffic study.
Did you consider doing a parking, a traffic study?
No, the answer is no, because when we were looking at the parking, and I'll have to let the gentleman speak, but they said that because of the usage, they didn't think it'd be worthwhile because it's, it'd be such a low-impact use. If you were to do commercial there, the trips would be much, would be much higher. And again, I'll let you speak to that, so.
All right. Is there a, on the exiting on Genesee, is it, is it a right turn only, or cars can go either way?
So right now, it's, the way it's drawn, it's either way, but what we would be willing to do is make it a right turn only and create a port chap. So I get people could do an illegal turn, but at least you're deterring folks from turning left.
All right. Do you be willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions for the architect? Ms. Bicki.
On our community benefits list that has been put together, what, what things have been included that might show up there is one question. And then also, thinking about the traffic comments and the traffic calming, would it be feasible to have a raised sidewalk or some kind of, anyway, incorporating in the parking, anything that would slow traffic as it comes in and out would be something to, to consider. And then also the ratio of bike parking to car parking, I see that a little parking rack, but is there bike parking maybe in the storage units?
There could be bike parking in the storage units, yes. I don't have a count on the actual bike parking that we're providing on site. I'm not following the raised sidewalk. Could you explain that?
Or something that would be along, I was thinking about something that would slow the traffic as it comes into the parking lot sometimes.
Like a speed bump or something?
Well, when the, no, no, when the sidewalk stays as level as possible. But actually, I'll take that back for right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I go for it. I'd just like to respond, Commissioner, to the community benefits. They include the following, and it's not the exhaustive list, but the public art concept, the LED, LED lighting throughout the building, the Energy Star-efficient appliances, the fourteen accessible ground-level units, drought-resistant landscaping, the preservation of the four trees, approximately three thousand square feet of additional green space beyond what is required by ordinance, the large windows and sliding doors in each unit to allow for natural light and fresh air, the outdoor balconies, ducts and porches that are provided for each unit depending on their location in the building, the packaged heating and cooling units that I mentioned, the two bicycle racks, and also the five EV chargers. There's probably a few things that I missed that are components of the building, such as heat pumps and things of that nature, but that gives a more comprehensive list of the community benefits.
All right, thank you. All right. Do we have any other questions for the petitioner? Are we ready for?
I'd just, just like to conclude, and I appreciate your time, and we'll be here for any questions later that may come up as a public comment and the public hearing progresses. But we do believe we have an excellent project, and we respectfully request that you do give this final PUD approval and our site plan approval and a recommendation for the PUD rezoning to the city commission. We thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. All right. Mr. Esprit.
Yes, I do have one quick question. You mentioned that your parking expert is here?
Yes.
Can I ask you to come forward?
Mr. Swanson?
Good evening, sir.
Jacob Swanson, police man.
So I did read your parking study, and I found it very informative, but just for the edification of everybody here in the room, seventy-nine spots are being proposed. Your study recommended fifty-eight. Can you give us a ninety-second breakdown of how you came to that number?
Sure. So what we use is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, IT, parking generation database. They collect various data throughout the state and nation, and it's just a clagmeration of parking data. So that is what we use to generate the parking demand, is that's our first step. And so the parking demand is based on, we can look at units, or we can look at bedrooms. So we did both of that and used the conservative estimate, and that provides us a parking demand of fifty-eight units, or fifty-eight spaces, apologize. For general, generally for residential, we like a parking occupant, maximum parking occupancy of ninety to ninety-five percent. So the recommended would be sixty-four, sixty-five spaces, because you want to have overlap for any, any additional parking as guests or just overturn of parking. So overall, the recommendation would be to have nine, at least ninety percent occupancy of the fifty-eight spaces, so approximately sixty-four, sixty-five spaces.
Yeah, because when I did some quick math, and obviously I'm not a parking expert such as yourself, but when I looked at the thirty-five one-bedroom units and assigned one point two-five spots per unit, and looked at the two-bedroom units and assigned two spots per units, or two spots per unit, I also came up at fifty-eight. So I was just wondering, you know, we've had other experience in Royal Oak with, you know, having smaller, single-family units like this, which tend to be occupied by six people.
Yeah, and what we see in a lot of cities is that the ordinances are overparked, and they haven't been updated with the change in parking trends. So that's why the Royal Oak parking requirement, I think, was over eighty, I think, two units, two spaces per unit. So we use the IT parking as, it's more realistic data than some of the updated zoning ordinances.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
All right. Other questions for the petitioner before we move into public comment? All right. Hearing done. I will now open the public hearing on this matter. This gentleman over here got his hand up before anybody. Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and you have three minutes.
Rich Ettrich. I live approximately five houses from this. I purchased my house fifty-three years ago. I'm along with everybody else who does not want this project. Sorry, Dennis Cullen. We would much rather have an empty bank building, perfectly honestly, than what they're proposing. I've got this four-page that they sent out that they must demonstrate to get the PUD that they have to follow these. Just a couple of things. They're public art. It's just a couple of large yard signs according to the diorams, okay? If you're so happy about getting the traffic to Rochester and Fourteen, then completely close the Genesee Road entrance. That way, nobody's going in and out Genesee. Anybody lives to the east of us or to the south of us, they're not going to Fourteen and around to come in. They're cutting through Campbell Road to Huron, Genesee, Ottawa, Donald, and they're gonna make a blast right down Genesee into that, into that residence, okay? They talk about, you know, proposed developments, shall consist of goals for public transit corridors. That's not a public transit corridor. Rochester Road has no public transit on that corridor. The, the water main on the driveway into Genesee right now has broken four or five times in the last couple, three years. They're all constantly down there repairing it, so we're concerned about the water. And I guess probably the last thing that kind of made me laugh was the provisions about modern amenities. Now, I realize it's just the twenty-first century, but washer and dryer, it's a modern amenity. Heating and cooling with a thermostat. I mean, that's a big seller. I may sell my house to go down there. They have windows and doors to let light in, all right? EV chargers. Now, seven EV chargers at fifty kilowatts or fifty watts each is two-hundred-and-fifty. That's the total of our grid of our neighborhood to begin with. So we're looking at, at a power situation. But the biggest thing that really struck me funny was the fact that we're gonna have bike racks. I mean, that's just what we need on that street is more bike racks. That's all I've got. They're talking about the project wouldn't go through without the PUD. It's exactly what we want. We don't want the PUD. We don't want the project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. This gentleman right in the front here. I would ask we keep the cheering or hooting or whatever to a minimum. That's not what this, this is a quasi-judicial meeting. Please introduce yourself.
So Joe Cartcher, I actually have one of the businesses to the south of there. So I'm not gonna really touch on the whole residential part and things like that, but are we able to just get that visual up that shows how we're gonna access onto the public right away in that parking lot? Because one of the, I go in and, in and out of that lot quite often, and it's built, I'm gonna guess back in the twenties when things maybe had different standards of how wide the driveway needs to be. I got Google Earth, you know, and from the wall to the building, we're looking at about fifteen feet. These gentlemen mentioned that, you know, twenty feet wide would be the proper way for two-way traffic. When I go in and there's another car approaching, I literally have to wait by the entrance, allow them to come through before I go through, because two cars passing is, is really a challenge, especially if one of them could be a pickup truck or something like that. So I would say that particular parking lot is probably already too busy for how wide the, the parking lot is. Is there any other business owners here? Do you guys ever have to pause in order to let people through? It, it is very dangerous, because it, there's just not enough room for two cars to pass each other. And to think that we're gonna have forty-two residents using that as a major thoroughway to reach Fourteen Mile, which would be a natural, you know, path to seventy-five, it's a concern, you know? And I got a bunch of other things, but I have a feeling they'll get brought up with, with the other folks. But that's, to me, that's just not feasible. And I don't think there's a way to correct it. You guys looked at that particular part of it? And what was your thought?
Could you direct your comments to the commission, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand. I couldn't do that. But anyways, that's, that's it.
All right, thank you. All right. The bearded gentleman there. Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Sure. Hi, my name is Ken Long. I'm a twelve-year resident of Royal Oak and a three-year homeowner of, here in the city of Royal Oak. I'd like to speak in favor of approving the planned unit development here at forty-seven oh four South Rochester Road. The development would add high-density housing when the city of Royal Oak is facing a shortage of attainable single-family units. Additionally, the development would replace a currently empty building with forty-two new dwellings within the city that we love and call home. Considering parking, there are, while there are insufficient spaces by code, I would favor a variance in order to accommodate the addition of the new multi-unit housing, although I would be in favor of seeking ways to reduce the new parking and add more green space in this project. As an advocate for introducing sustainable mobility within the city, I'm also excited to hear about the plans for five EV chargers, as well as the bike racks that would be included in the plans to kind of advocate for more sustainable mobility across the city. This type of project, in my opinion, exemplifies the Royal Oak that we want for the future of our city and our families that either want to grow into living within the city, or for folks that want to age in, age in place and into right-sized housing that fits their needs. This is a development that attracts residents and people that want to move into the city but face the barrier of finding easily attainable housing in the single-family units that are available on the market. This development is a step in the right direction towards a more diverse and equitable Royal Oak, and I welcome it for our soon-to-be fellow neighbors. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I saw the hand go up over here with the black shirt there. Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
My name's Elizabeth Carpenter. I live on Genesee Street, on the second block from the proposed development. And I was wondering if you could bring the screen up to the site plan where it shows the other buildings in that area. But I'm a longtime resident of Royal Oak as well. I have raised my children here. I rented here to begin with, and now I've owned my property on Genesee for twenty-five years. We're not opposed to something going into this spot. We do want something to go in the bank, but we just want it to fit the neighborhood grid. If you look at, and I know you're not gonna switch the screen, but if you look at every other business around that, it is a ranch-style business. If you look at our street, it's two blocks long with a jog and another two blocks. On, on the west side, we're already had that new development a few years ago that have greatly impacted the traffic flow. I know they weren't going to do a traffic study. I live on Genesee, and there's so many children that play out in the street every day. This is going to increase the traffic flow down our street. We live in a very different type of neighborhood in Royal Oak, and we all bought homes there for a certain reason. We have country in the city. We have half-acre lots. We enjoy our sunrises. We enjoy our sunsets. That lot is labeled for sixteen units. Something of a two-story would be wonderful. You're actually taking the sunshine and giving, taking it away from the neighbors to the east. If you look at the balconies, yes, they've got the sun, they've got everything, but it's overshadowing the neighborhoods. Right across from it is an apartment complex, or it's maybe six to eight units, ranch-style. All the businesses in that area, ranch-style. It just doesn't belong in the, that neighborhood. I mean, we can do housing there. I was here in two thousand nineteen as well when they were proposing this, and it's not that we're adverse to it. The property hasn't been open for a decade. The bank was functional up until a few years ago. Turned into a blight when they started tearing up the parking lot and doing all these surveys and all these studies. But the traffic study is something I would absolutely ask for, to see how that is impacting our neighborhood. Also want to touch base real quick on that alley. It is dangerous. I've lived there for twenty-five years. You go down that alley, I have a hard time believing that you could pass two cars. You do have to pull over, and that brings in the fire emergency. How's a fire truck gonna get down there to help these forty-two units? And they're also not proposing anything on Rochester Road for an entrance and exit. So that means that everyone is going to come down my two-block street, which people already do, to avoid the traffic on Fourteen.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Back there. All right. Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name's James Edry. I live at nine fifteen, which is two houses east of the thing. First of all, I thank the gentleman for they've made it a little bit smaller, gave us a little bit more parking, and, but like everybody's been mentioning is that alley. You got one alley, and I went out there and measured it. From wall to wall going out to Rochester Road, it's twenty-two foot, four inches. That's just a little bit wider than a normal two-car garage. And I'll tell you right now, it's, it's all right, but when you pull up the royal, royal bar, you gotta slow way down. You gotta slow way down because you can't see what's going down the sidewalk. Okay, that's one issue. The other issue is the other one is smaller than a two-car garage door. It's nineteen foot, four inches. So that's what's gonna be used by most of the people in this PUD. I mean, I'm thankful for a lot of things that they I mean, I'm thankful for a lot of things that they, they come up with. But it really scares me is that. I mean, quite honestly, I'd be happy if they could sit there like, I know they're going to be talking about Beaumont. I go to the allergist right there, just east of what they're talking about for Beaumont across from the hospital. And I tell you right now, that getting in and out of there is tough right now. But if they could sit there and put another, and widen that entrance, that alley that goes to Rochester Road would solve a lot of problems. I mean, everybody understands what I'm talking about, right? I mean, I mean, all these people that live there, they know what it's like. Because the other day I had to go out, and I tell you right now, I was going about two miles an hour, and a guy rode by on his bicycle. That's scary. Somebody's going to be hit right there. And I agree with everybody else says. Traffic on the street has picked up a lot, especially since they tore down Mark 20 and put down whatever it is, Midtown Point, whatever. It's crazy up there. And I wish you people would sit there on the street during rush hour and see what goes on. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions before I leave? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Way in the back there, the great shirt, I think had his hand up next. No problem. Just introduce yourself. You got three minutes.
My name is Brian Herman, and my wife and I live on Genesee Drive. First of all, as far as the rebel goes, I had an unscheduled, unanticipated meeting with, or discussion with Mr. Randazzo at a restaurant several weeks ago. And do you recall?
I do.
And he indicated to me that he was going to do a traffic study. Apparently, he couldn't find anybody that lacked enough integrity to tell him his traffic study was what he wanted to hear. That would be my opinion. This PUD is not what the community wants. Everything on this PUD is simply directed towards allowing a unit to be built in that location that does not fit in the community. Everybody here is telling you it's too big. There's no, there's no advantages to the community. Miriam Webster decide that, says that the community is synonymous with neighborhood. And the neighborhood is, it gets no benefit from this PUD. The housing prices are not going to go up. Our traffic's going to increase. We're going to get no advantages from this, just negative responses. In addition, the people in the neighborhood have the right to have their voices heard. And Ms. Douglas, Ms. Douglas indicated in a, in a previous commission meeting that people that didn't live in the neighborhood didn't, it's something, I'm paraphrasing, that they did not have a right to have an opinion if they didn't live in the neighborhood. And that was about the Greenfield Road complex. So if you don't live in our neighborhood, what gives you the, the right to have an opinion on what we want as a neighborhood? This is a neighborhood, this is a neighborhood issue, and we do not want this. I'm not against them putting an apartment building on that corner, but we don't need a PUD to do it. It already is allowed under, what is the other classification? You tell me, what's the other classification? Unit two. And the land use 217 and 2, and 220 both allow two- and three-story. None of them mentions two and a, three and a half stories. And that's not three and a half stories. It's only three and a half stories because you're calling the dormers a half a story. It's a four-story building. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Over here in the glasses. Yes. Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sean. I'm a homeowner in Royal Oak. I live on Maplewood. I would like to speak in favor of this development. A lot of people have already made some points. I just want to make a couple of my own. So first, I used to write in Ferndale. I lived in a duplex. There was people above me, and then I lived on the first floor. We had two cars, one for the above, one for below. I now live in a single-family neighborhood. There are three people in my single-family home next to me, and they have four cars. It seems to me that when it comes to a single-family neighborhood, people don't have the same concerns about traffic, even though I bet you that there are more cars in my single-family neighborhood than there will be in this apartment building. In terms of traffic, I am sensitive to that. I would like to point out, you with my, my street, which again, has more cars than probably this apartment building will, not everybody leaves at the same time, right? Most of the time, a car will be parked at a house or will be gone versus a business, which a lot of cars will be coming in and out throughout the day. So again, the number of cars isn't necessarily a function of the number of people. It's a function of wealth. There's a lot of people in my single-family neighborhood that love to park their big trucks, park their RVs. They have as many cars as they want. But when it comes to people who live in multifamily homes, you know, well, we were worried about that. So I just wanted to point that out. I brought this up last meeting. My house was built in 1947, before modern zoning codes. My house, when it was originally built, was 900 square feet. That would be illegal to build today under current zoning codes. A lot of people live in homes in Royal Oak that were built before modern zoning codes. And now that we have that, they're using that ability to shut new development down. I just think that we should be able to build stuff in Royal Oak that we used to be able to build. And again, my house used to be illegal under current, was legal and now is illegal to build. Lastly, we're going to be approving a new Beaumont center later. And you know, this, this body approves new businesses. We can't keep approving new health centers, new schools, you know, new places for people to work without thinking about housing. We can't just keep asking people to come work in Royal Oak, you know, pay taxes here and then not provide them places to live. I think that's something that the commission needs to take into account. I'm sensitive to traffic issues. I think that can be addressed with traffic calming measures as the city has taken place in other pla, other streets, namely Vincetta. I drive down Vincetta a lot. Those new bumpouts, those really reduce the speed. I have to admit, I used to kind of modestly drive through there, and now I do have to slow down. I think that was a good addition. And I would support something on my street like that as well. So again, the number of cars is a function of necessarily wealth, not people. And I, I think that this is something that needs to be approved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The person with the papers, with their hand up.
I sent an email earlier. Did you guys get it? Carolyn Mertz?
Uh, maybe.
Did you get my email? I sent it earlier today. If you didn't, I want to come up and hand you a couple pictures of my property.
Sure. You can start on the end. You can just start on the end, and we'll circulate. Or we'll go from the center and out. How about that?
So the first thing I want to address is in February, Mr. Randazzo did bring up a traffic survey. And if we're going to go with 42 units, times that by potentially two, so 84 cars, I think it's necessary, absolutely necessary. I have the second house and the third house backyard to the east of this project. At 40 feet, this is going to dwarf my house, and I live in a quad level, okay? As the picture shows, it's going to take away my sunsets. While they're going to get nice, you know, fold, doors to open and fresh air and all that stuff, I'm going to be shaded. I don't know how much an EV station takes, but it sounds like that's going to cut into the parking spots, so we got an issue there. Opening up that alley, the north-south alley I'm talking about, is going to be a nightmare for anybody east of this project. Currently, you know, you don't even have a car length between the little strip mall and where the alley is. They're right next to one another. So there's accidents that happen there quite frequently with an increase of 84 cars, well, maybe not all of them, 60, coming in and out the north-south alley. Nightmare situation. They're going to put seven LEDs on that lot. It's going to be lit up like a casino. And one thing I want you to realize is 83% of this projected project, the units are 750 square feet and under. My little rental is 850 square feet. But it's got a backyard, okay? The park on the corner with the art is useless. We all live in half-acre properties. So let me see. EV stations dwarf my house, LEDs, traffic study. Okay, yeah, so that's pretty much it. What I would like to ask, though, is if any of you guys take any donations, dinners, trips from any of these petitioners, that you recuse yourself from this vote. It's very important to us that live here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The orange shirt way in the back. Please introduce yourself. Three minutes.
Good evening. Trish Oliver, Royal Oak resident for almost 40 years. In August 2023, this same project at 4704 South Rochester Road was on the planning commission meeting agenda. It was adjourned after former planning commission chairman of 10 years and former city commissioner Tom Halleck stated at public comment that former mayor and attorney Dennis Cowan of Plunkett Cooney, who is representing this project, is a major contributor to Mayor Mike Fournier, as well as many of the clients that he brings in front of the planning commission. In fact, it was stated that Cowan had just held a major fundraiser attended by developers for the mayor a couple of weeks earlier in the summer of 2023 at Tomato's. It was further stated that due to ethical concerns, the mayor should have recused himself from that evening's public vote about the project. Despite this, Mayor Fournier refused to recuse himself, and a large crowd strongly objected. Now, the same project is back on the agenda. Since then, three significant events have happened. Number one, unfortunately for the public, since August 2023, even more political contributions have been accepted by the mayor and other elected officials from these same constant contributors who inevitably get what they want while the neighborhoods suffer. Number two, the planning commission has failed to take any action to create ethical rules and regulations regarding the conduct of planning commission members. Number three, just 24 hours ago, a similar project at 718 West Fourth Street that didn't even come close to meeting the criteria for PUD rezoning was denied by the city commission. The only significant difference between that project that was denied and this Rochester Road project is that Dennis Cowan and the architect Krieger are significant political contributors, but they were not involved. Being a political contributor is not one of the criteria for anyone to vote for approval. In addition, Dennis Cowan added an 11th-hour document entitled Compliance with PUD Standards, but essentially, it is like putting lipstick on a pig. Unfortunately for the adjacent neighborhood, they are faced with a horrible project that does not meet any of the legal criteria for rezoning to a PUD. But it becomes even more apparent that the only rule that applies is the rule regarding pay-to-play in Royal Oak. Thank you.
All right. So, so folks, let me just say once again, this, I've said this before. This is way more like a court hearing than a football game. And I would ask, I would ask the audience to refrain from acting like it's, it's a football game, please. Let's have decorum, please. Okay, right here.
Thank you. My name's Scott Rosenthal. I'm the owner of the Royal and Bar just north of the, on the alley that everyone's talking about. I kind of revised what I wanted to bring up here. I'm concerned about the entrance into that city parking. That city parking, even though it's city, we're paying taxes on it. It was just recently repaved, and everyone is paying something on their assessments on all that. Me, I'm paying the most because I have seating capacity of 49, and they determine that I have to pay the most. So that's one thing. The other thing, the, the alley is very dangerous. And you are totally blind looking north on Rochester Road as you walk out, as you drive out. It's scary, and you're, you got to be really careful. 14 Mile is only a right turn. So when you go out to the parking lot onto 14 Mile, it's strictly a right turn only. You're going to be pushing a lot of people through the parking lot on the Rochester Road. Okay, so it's going to create a lot more traffic there. The other thing is, is that's where all the delivery trucks stop. The alley right there, they park there. That alley gets blocked with the delivery trucks. So depending on when the delivery trucks are, usually in the morning, that's going to be blocked. People won't be able to use that exit. Also, you're also going to be creating one parking lot by having an entrance that, between the two. As soon as the parking lot gets full, which it does get full, they're going to be parking in the apartment complex. And if the apartment complex gets full, where they're going to go? They're going to go get home 11 o'clock at night. They don't have a parking spot. The bar's busy, the parking lot's busy. There's no parking there, they're going to the street. And that's the last thing you want, is we have people parking in the streets, especially on Genesee. No one wants that. So that's about all I got.
All right, thank you. Back row there, you'll be next.
Good evening. My name's Patricia Korsak. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Royal Oak. My husband and I moved here as newlyweds to live in a family community to start our family. We raised our family here. We've been on Genesee the whole time. We are neighbors of Brian and Linda Herman. My family and I are against this proposal. Not only is this proposal not putting current residents first, you are not considering the mess that this will cause. Have you considered the infrastructure, the sewage, the water, the electricity that this is going to cause? That you're going to need to increase? The traffic, the problems? Are you only seeing dollar signs? The size of the proposed apartment complex is ludicrous for the size of the lot. The traffic and parking and noise issues must be considered for the residents that are there. Genesee is already being used as a cut-through for drivers to avoid the light at 14 Mile and Campbell. And the addition of the proposed oversized rental project will add to the issues we are already experiencing. We're not pleased with the way the Royal Oak is going. It is not the family town that I moved into and that I want to stay in. And I, I just want you to consider the people who live at the north end. We feel like we're the redheaded stepchildren at the family reunion that nobody thinks about us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then this gentleman here. Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Jim Robertson, I live on Genesee. This is basically just a statement because I've been to a few meetings, I've heard you guys all talk. We got the bike racks, we got the bushes, we got the lighting. And it's amps, not wattage, that he's worried about the EV charging stations draw. They draw 50 amps per EV charging stations. That would be 350 amps on the electrical system. It can't handle it. System is antiquated and old. They're updating it, but it's going to take a while. Secondly, I put an addition on the side, on the back of my house on Genesee. I submitted plans. They said no. You know why? Because it was too big. I said, okay, I lowered it down. I made it smaller. I tried to do a pole barn in addition to. I can't do the pole barn because it's too big for how big my lot is. And I didn't put up bushes to try to hide it, or I didn't put in a bike rack, so. But they wouldn't let me do it because of, it was too big for the lot size. You guys are putting 16,000 square feet of living space on a lot. I would like to see an electrical diagram of how much draw that building is going to have if it's all electrical. Okay, with the electric, in the middle of the summer, on a 100-degree day, I want to see what kind of draw the building would have. It's, it's way too big for what it is. You could put a cord in there and build four beautiful homes, and they would sell like hotcakes in Royal Oak, North Royal Oak. They just sold three around the corner for $800,000. Those taxes are probably $12,000 to $15,000 a year per house. And you guys just want to put a bunch of glass, glass boxes up with concrete walls. Save the neighborhood. And you didn't save a tree, you just decided not to murder a tree. So, thank you. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Over there. Yes.
Hello. I'm Trish Crowder, and I own custom swimwear. We are one of the buildings, businesses, that are also using this parking lot. I don't know if any of you have ever spent any time in the parking lot, but before you approve this, you need to sit in that parking lot. It is extremely dangerous pulling in and out of that parking lot. It's very small, both of the entrances are very narrow. When you pull out, you literally have to put your nose out, get out, and look in both directions, and then pull out, because when you pull out, you're blinded on both spots here, from the brick wall, from the businesses, and the sidewalk is directly there. It's just common sense. You can only fit one car going in and out. You can only fit one car going in and out on this side. To allow that parking lot be open to ours, there's no common sense in it, none, other than allowing them to build a building that is way too big for the piece of property. There is not enough parking for it. I don't know about you, but you look around, how many people have 1 and 1/2 cars or 1.9 cars per unit? Everybody has two cars. They're gonna be parking in our lot. I just think that's extremely unfair, I pay a lot of taxes, I bought the building because of the parking lot. To have it taken away and be utilized for this is unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you. On the aisle here.
Hi, my name is Amber Long. I'm a resident of Royal Oak since 2012 and a homeowner since 2021. I understand that excessive traffic through neighborhoods is an issue around this area, as well as a tight squeeze in the alley, and I feel like I support this project, but maybe not quite so much just as-is and not changing anything. There are other places in the city that have no parking on one side of the street, a no-through traffic area down by the interstate, so I think maybe that might be something that we could consider here. I support this project, all that being said, I support the project because any additional housing in our city is a plus. Additional housing that repurposes property that's currently empty is a bigger plus. Specifically, I'd love to see the plans, I'd love to see that the plans include a bike rack for residents and several trees, although I'd love to see more for beautification and environmental benefits. Pocket parks, as the developer called this, is a great way to have a third space, even though it's small, it's a nice addition to the project. While I love our downtown, seeing the city expanding its housing options in several areas is exciting. We can't guarantee that this will be attainable housing, the market is something that's responsible for that, but more housing means more competition, and we have to have that to make housing available for everyone. A housing shortage burdens low and middle-income residents and has a disproportionate impact on senior citizens, young families, and communities of colors. I'd encourage the committee to even consider, I know this is not gonna be popular, but even a lower parking requirement. In conclusion, more housing means more diversity, and speaking for somebody who loves this city, I love to see more diversity in our city. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Over here, red shirt there.
Hello.
Please introduce yourself, three minutes.
Hi, I'm Scott Crowder, I'm the building owner of 4732 Rochester Road. Our building is the third over that utilizes the parking lot, or the city parking lot. I noticed on their diagram here, everyone's talking about this alley that's gonna be used. It isn't large enough for two cars, I'm testifying to that, but there's no sidewalks on this new proposal. It seems like the city has sidewalk requirements if they're gonna use it as a driveway. There's also another entrance that goes in and out of 14 Mile Road, again, there's no sidewalks there. You're putting a lot of people into that area that are gonna be on bikes with their bike racks, they should probably have a sidewalk to ride down, so we're not running them over. The placement of the garbage dumpsters happens to be the exact area in the city parking lot that the city uses for snow plowing and piles the snow. I was wondering where they're gonna put the snow in their parking lot, and how they're gonna address driving through that snow when they're leaving their building. I don't think this parking facility enhances what the city's looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Way in the back there. Please introduce yourself, three minutes.
My name's Bob Stugland, I grew up on Genesee Street, now I live a couple of streets over. I live on the Beacon Row condos on Rochester Road between Donald, between Donald and Bowman. We have nine units there. I'm the only one that uses one car. They all have two cars, every one of them. They're all two-family people, husbands and wives or partners. We also have three visitor parking spots. Every weekend they're in use, every weekend, okay? Now, take Rochester Road. You've already had a road diet between 12 and 13 Mile Road, you're gonna do it up to 14 now? Is it gonna be that much more congested, those people trying to get out of those parking lots, get out of the parking lot where the businesses are, that the lady has talked about and gentleman talked about, or out the parking lot to get out, from Genesee onto Rochester Road? The other thing is, not to disparage the Royal Inn, it's been here a long time, no problem with that, but if I was a little inebriated, and right now I had to go on into Rochester Road or to 14 Mile Road, to not have to see any cops, I'd probably take Genesee. Wouldn't you think? Probably take Genesee, that's where they'd be going, down Genesee Street. So, the road diet, the people that would leave the Royal, that maybe were inebriated, nothing to disparage the Royal, they've been here a long time, okay? Probably good neighbors. The second, the third thing would be just the parking. We have two parking spots in our nine units, okay? We use them, plus the three that are guest parking. So, one more thing. You tear down that wall in any kind of way, you're gonna have more rats over there. You're gonna have rats. There's a cinder block wall around that whole parking structure, okay? The whole parking lot, you're gonna have rats from all those businesses, restaurants and the bar who serves food. That's it. Rats, more traffic on the, harder to get onto Rochester Road, not enough parking for the unit, and anything else I just mentioned, so, inebriated drivers turning onto Rochester Street.
All right, thank you. Right here on the aisle, yes.
Hi, I'm Randy Houston, I live on Genesee. First, first thing I thought was interesting is, everybody's come to you and said something negative says where they live, and they live near this area. People that are positive seem to be citizens of Royal Oak, so keep that in mind when you, when you think about this project. I guess I might, the only question I didn't really hear anybody ask is why? Why, why are we taking this route? Why are we taking this route to get this project approved? And I thought I heard 16 units could go in there with no problem. We wouldn't need to have this discussion, you wouldn't need to hear all these angry people, but we wanna put 42 units in. Well, why is that? Well, that's because they gotta make money, which I'm all about, make money. But why do they gotta make 42 to make money? Because the property's too expensive. Well, everybody's happy here if you guys do what the neighbors don't want. You're happy, you get taxes, they're happy, they get a big project, make a lot of money. The guy selling the property gets a lot of money. You're subsidizing this project with our quality of life. Now, we could put 16 units in there, or something with more traffic, I don't know, but right out of the gate, how is it even coming to you with, I want 42? That just seems insane. I can't even believe we're getting to all these other questions. So, I'm very passionate about it, so I'm trying not to yell, so instead I'm getting a little dry voice, but keep in mind, you, you represent the city as far as the taxes go, but you represent the citizens of that city, and there's a lot of people here saying this project's too big. They're not saying no, they're saying not this one, all right? And if you can't get something on that property, it's because it's too expensive a property, and you're subsidizing it with my, with my traffic. So, please don't do that. Thank you.
Somebody with a dark sweater there.
I have some pictures as well, I think you probably would rather look at these than me.
All right, if you pass them around, thanks.
My name is Thomas Horman, I've been, I moved to Royal Oak in 1978. In 1993, I purchased my current residence at 914 Genesee Avenue. The northwest corner of my property is about 120 feet from the southeast corner of the subject site. I respectfully, respectfully request that the commission disapprove the site plan and proposed rezoning. The planning division looks, studies for the current zoning might well be summarized as too many residential units for the site, leading to structures that are too wide, too tall, and too close to the adjoining residential neighborhood, and also resulting in too much traffic on adjacent streets. I'd like to note that the ridge line of the west wing of the proposed structure is actually 47 and 1/2 feet above grade. I realize that for purposes of calculation, calculating the visual massing, we're looking at 40 and 1/2 feet, but that's a paper number. The actual number that you'll see looking at that building is 47 and 1/2 feet. I'd also like to note that the backyards of the residences along the north side of Genesee Avenue are about four to five feet lower than the surface of the site parking lot, so this increases the apparent height for my neighbors on the north side of Genesee. We talked a little bit about increased traffic, I'd like to also note that this also will include increased numbers of delivery vehicles, Amazon, FedEx, UPS, DoorDash, and so forth, for those 42 units. And let's talk a little bit about those 42 units. On Genesee Avenue, from Rochester Road to Vermont Avenue, there are a total of 34 single-family residential units, and an additional eight multifamily residential units, for a total of 42 residential units. So, the proposed project will double the number of residential units along the stretch of Genesee Avenue, with resultant increases in traffic, utility, usage, and so forth. I also have a question, I did not see in the site locate, in the site plan, how stormwater runoff from the proposed project will be managed. I would also like to note that the, the developers have a similar, in fact, a very similar-looking project, a quarter mile north on Rochester Road, Elliott Park in Clausen at 444 North Rochester. That's a 30-unit development, a two-and-a-half-story development. If you have a chance, go into their parking lot and look at those two-and-a-half stories, and then look at the drawings for the three-and-a-half stories. It makes a lot of difference. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, right here in the gray, or I think it's gray. Please introduce yourself, three minutes.
Good evening, my name's Charlie Harris, I'm a licensed architect and construction project manager, very pro-development, usually I'm on the other side of the table. Tonight, I'm here as a resident and a father. I think Weston and his dad did a great job portraying the current situation on our streets, as well as our, our other neighbors here. Mr. Cowan mentioned that there's been a severe lack of interest in this property. I can guarantee you that, that is not true. I have laid out this site countless times, looking to develop and invest my own personal funds into this property. The current zoning offers many opportunities to develop this and turn this property for profit and with interest for the community. The purpose of a PUD is, we generally see at shopping centers, malls, places where they're developing numerous buildings, not a single building at one point in time. This is a back route to get past the zoning board, which is a challenge for us residents. One of the biggest things is, there's exterior stairs and exterior corridors on this property. That's what's proposed. People mentioned bike racks, bikes are gonna end up on those guardrails, locked there and not move all through the winter. Those exterior stairs resemble a motel to me, which we've tried to eliminate, a number of those throughout the city over the years. One of the biggest things to me is, I, I attended the community gathering that they hosted back in February, and one of the things I asked was, do you have this property under contract? Do you own this property? I was told yes. This property has not been maintained, not once, over the last couple of years. Not one time this winter when it snowed, no one showed up to shovel that sidewalk. If they're long-term owners, is that the long-term solution? I'd like you all to, to think about this as we move forward tonight. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Paper held up back there.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. I'll try to quickly go through my notes, as most of everything has already been pretty much brought up. My name's Paul Anselm, I live on Genesee Street and have lived there for 30 years. I too have seen the increase in the traffic that's been as a result of the new development where Mark Twain was. I'm opposed to the three-and-a-half-story apartment building. I do agree something needs to be done with the site. Some suggestions have been made of a two-story, two-and-a-half-story might be suitable, but the biggest issue seems to be, and we all are agreeing upon, is the traffic on Genesee, and we need to eliminate that entrance. Pork chop was suggested, that was brought up during the February meeting, and I was one of them that talked about it. First one to raise my hand, that's not gonna work. We go around them, I do it at Van Dyke and 14 Mile to go into Walmart. But if you can get a two-and-a-half-story, cut it down, as somebody's mentioned, 16 units, face Genesee with the unit, no entrance on Genesee, put the ingress egress to Rochester Road. We already all have heard it, the alleys are not gonna work, they're too narrow, traffic trying to get in and out, delivery trucks, all been stated. The big issue is the traffic, everybody, it's obvious, anybody coming from I-75, the mall, shopping, restaurants, majority of that is east of that intersection. They are not gonna wanna go through that light, they're not gonna be able to turn down that alley going west on 14, they're not gonna go around it to come in the alley by the bar, they're gonna cut down Vermont, they're gonna cut down Ferris, they're gonna use Genesee to go to those apartments. The same with Campbell Road, anybody coming north on Campbell are gonna cut through all those side streets like they do now, coming from Rochester to go across to Genesee, and then they'll use that to get to those apartments. Most everything else has been covered, so I won't repeat it. But again, face Genesee with the building, parking in the back, eliminate the opening to Genesee, and just put the entrance and exits onto Rochester Road. I hope you guys will give consideration to the impact on our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Right there, sweater vest.
I know, three minutes.
And introduce yourself.
My name is Pat Wall, I've been a 38-year resident of Royal Oak, and I have appreciated greatly. There's been a lot of changes, we know, in the city, and interestingly enough, yesterday, in a devotional book that I have, that you might have heard of, The Daily Bread, it was called Joy in the City, and the first verse they gave us was, "When the righteous prosper, the city rejoices." I think that's very important to all of us, that we be on that side, and that we treat others how we wanna be treated. others how we want to be treated. And I don't know if, listening to everyone tonight, you realize that you would not want to be on that street, Genesee. Randy said about the master plan, offers 16 units. We're tired of seeing the violation of the master plan when you make it a PUD. We know what happened at Mark Twain. Fortunately, there are no houses. They're next to a dog park and a school and businesses, and they exit out onto a busy street. Even though they do take Genesee, they're already got a lot of residents of Midtown Point going down their street. Also, I have an idea that maybe the traffic study wasn't done, because we brought up that two lanes were probably going to be coming off of Rochester Road. And it would totally wreck the study, because you're going to have two lanes instead of four lanes. But what will the legacy be for someone who has this happen? What about their children? Again, the scripture says in Proverbs, "When the righteous prosper, the city rejoices. Through the blessing of the upright, a city is exalted. A wicked man earns deceptive wages, but he who sells righteousness reaps a sure reward. The desire of the righteous ends only in good, but the hope of the wicked only in wrath." And we don't want that to happen to anybody. But when things keep happening, similarly in a neighborhood that has totally all single-story buildings, this is Campbell Road. And you can see, there's a whole lot of concrete in the front.
Thank you.
And a lot of concrete meant a lot of water in the street.
All right. Thank you.
That went fast.
Over here, to the, next to the wall.
Nezha Poprovsky. Thanks for listening. I wasn't going to speak again, but for the speakers from YIMBY who spoke earlier, no one here said no diversity. They want their home sweet homes to stay that way. And I don't agree with the mentality of the developer, that just because a property is vacant, that something is better than nothing. Will the residents be happier with the vacant, somewhat green space, with a view or a dense Bigfoot monster that doesn't fit in? That can happen in my neighborhood. I know it's too late, but I wish the property would have been purchased by the city for a total green space. That would have been a little apology for the still-not-admitted environmental mistake for bulldozing down the now-extinct Mark Twain forest. We're in a climate crisis. We're in a climate crisis. We need every tree we can get. Not wait 20 to 30 years. I say this all the time. I saw your eyes roll, but it's the truth. We're in a climate crisis. Okay, so your grandchildren don't matter. P.S. After asking earlier for the rent space, could you please reveal the price of these apartments? I still haven't heard them yet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Right there in the back. Please introduce yourself. Three minutes.
Hello. My name is Steve Korsak. I'm also a resident of Genesee Avenue. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the points that have already been made to the committee this evening. I just want to say, I am not in appro, I am not, I oppose the rezoning and the site plan for, for the proposed lot on Rochester Road. I think it's going to be bad for the community, and I think it's going to contribute to a lot of different problems in infrastructure, traffic, and draw on current systems used by current residents. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Over here, yes. Introduce yourself. Three minutes.
Gretchen Parks, I promise I won't take three minutes. Everybody has said, all of my neighbors here have given you very good information about how our neighborhood feels, our community, how they feel. Rules are, are put in place for a reason, and this property has rules to it. I was at the February meeting, and I asked, point-blank, if you could build, just follow the rules, and it would be a wonderful, wonderful space, and none of us would have to spend our Tuesday evening here battling with the city. They would have a beautiful piece of property. 16 families would be able to live in apartments. Everybody would be happy. But no, it's all about money, and it's all about trying to get more out of a space. We really need to be thinking about what the community needs. You need to be keeping us here, not pushing us out. And that's really what I feel is happening. I really think that you definitely need to do a traffic study. The roads are outrageous along that stretch. I walk my dog there every day, and it is a hazard. And I really don't really want to get hit by a speeding car while I'm trying to walk my beautiful golden retriever. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else looking around? All right. I don't see any more hands, so I'm going to close the public part of the hearing, bring it back to the side of the table for discussion of the criteria, the project. Oh, what's that?
I was going to say, the petitioners want to respond to any of this. Do you have a microphone to hear you? Do you have a microphone? I can hear it.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to know if the petitioner wants to respond to any of the criticism they heard, or you just want to not.
Whatever questions the commission has will be answered. I'm sure there'll be many to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Or if the commissioners want to respond to anything, this, we could start with that as well. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions about the project, if you would. We heard that the EV charging stations will place an undue electrical burden, and I wondered how you will, what you will do to address that on behalf of the city and the people who live there.
Well, first of all, I've been involved in numerous projects, and this is the first time I've ever heard of that concern. We already have projects in the city that have EV charging stations, and they're not a drain in any way. I'm not sure how the electricity has all worked out. I'll ask Jason, come up and talk about that.
So we're not at the point right now where we ran electrical calculations, but what happens is, you do, you do an electrical load analysis, and then you communicate with DTE, and then they'll let you know if, if there's enough electrical capacity in that area in order to do that. We haven't run into an issue yet, not saying that we won't, but that's how you do it.
Okay. Thanks. And then second question, will this project, the site, have retention, water, stormwater retention?
Absolutely. That's noted on the plans. I'm surprised someone said they didn't see it, because it is noted on the plans, and that's a requirement of the city on every new construction project. So yes, and I think that is a net benefit, because the number-one issue in many parts of Royal Oak is, is basement flooding and backup flooding from stormwater. And by having this significant piece of property, which is one and a half, 1.23 acres, which does not have stormwater retention today or retention, having that in will be a net benefit plus to all the surrounding businesses and residences.
So that was my only question. Thanks.
Okay. Are there other questions for the petitioner or comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
A question about the alley. You guys are closest to the drawings, and I would imagine if you're making a proposal that would have the opportunity or even incentive for people to, to drive through the alley out onto 14 or even Rochester there, what, do you have, a lot of concerns were brought up about how that alley is dangerous, which, independent of this, that's a new concern for me, and if that's an issue, we got to tackle that. But when you did your, I mean, I imagine you didn't stop at your property. Did you look beyond that to see, like, the width of the alley? And do you have any more, maybe, exact measurements that could give us some idea of the width or what you looked at?
So right now, based on the records that we saw, it's 20 feet wide. I think the one gentleman measured it at 22. There's a couple of things we can look at doing. One, because we have a little bit of green space to the north, we could bump it, make it a little bit wider still. It'd go on to the petitioner's property a little bit. The other thing is, we've done numerous projects in the downtown. I get that's downtown, not, not outside downtown like this is, but you do have vehicles that are leaving a building where there's zero sightlines as you leave, so there's certain safety mechanisms you could put in place, whether it's mirrors or warning sounds, things like that. So I think it's something that can be overcome. We do it all the time, and we could.
All right. Other questions for the?
I have one thing just to mention. We did do a solar study. Could I hand this out to?
Yes, please.
Can you hand it out to us, too?
Chair.
So, I mean, you could see the, the times and dates that set the winter and summer solstice, so in the summer, the shadows won't be hitting the neighbors to the east at all. In the winter, at about 4 o'clock, it'll be going past property line, but closer to the north, and then about 5 o'clock in winter time, it's dark anyways.
All right. Thank you. All right. So further discussion on this side of the table? Comments? Motion? Mr. Ellison.
Now, I'm going, I'm going to jump into this, and, and, see, we heard a lot of comments tonight, and, and some of them, they're just, I've heard them many, many times for almost every development, and it's always the same. There's too much traffic. There's not enough parking. There's, it.
Well, there isn't.
Can we have, excuse me? Hold on.
We've got a table here. You guys had your time to speak, and if you're not going to be quiet while we continue on with our business, then we'll make arrangements to have you taken out.
All right.
No, we'll just adjourn.
Why is that?
We're going to ask again for people to respect the decorum here. Again, this is a quasi-judicial process. We open the floor for people to speak, and when it's our turn to discuss, we have our duty up here to look at these criterias and have a discussion, and we'd ask that you be polite and allow us to do it as we are required to.
Okay.
No, it's not your turn. Order, please.
You can call a recess.
Yeah, let's just call a recess.
Okay.
I thought that could be a short night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doing business.
Well, it's natural. You look at it, and you're like, that's on elliptical. That would add a layer of gravitation. Just makes sense. There's a lot out there, especially at the eclipse. I took my kids down to Southern Ohio, and I was warned.
So I did my best.
Thank you very much. All right, where were we? We were discussing the PUD proposal and the site plan. And we had adjourned the, closed the public hearing. We'd been asking a couple of questions of the petitioner. And this panel needs to discuss the project and in relation to the criteria that we are charged to consider. Ms. Peakey.
I guess I have a couple of comments. On one, on the safety issues around the alley and the slow traffic. I know it's extremely counterintuitive, but for the safety of people inside and outside of vehicles, it's actually good that people feel they have to slow down to a couple miles an hour, especially in alleys and in parking lots. Because that is what creates safety for people inside and outside the cars. And I know, again, it's a bit counterintuitive feeling, but it is something to consider. With as much electric as I see in this project, I'm surprised there isn't solar to produce onsite electric as well as storage. And that's something for consideration. For me, giving all of the different criteria and also our current mixed-use zoning that is in place, I don't feel this project is the right scale for the property. And I'd really like to see something more consistent with our current zoning. Anyway, those are just some initial comments.
All right, thank you. Mr. Osby.
Mr. Cowan, if you will, please, a couple of questions. I am of the opinion, and it's only one man's opinion, but the parking study that you did is very consistent with the parking studies that we see nationwide in higher density proposals such as this. I happen to feel that the 58 spots that you found proper versus the 79 that are being proposed, I think that 58 is frankly a better number. And my question for you, sir, is along the farthest portion of this project, you've got a bank of 21 spots. If those were eliminated, creating a larger green buffer for the neighborhood, is that something, again, not only one of seven, they may disagree with me, but if that bank of parking went away and was turned into additional green space, is that something that your team would consider?
I'm going to ask Jason to come up. Yes, not all of them. In speaking with our traffic, I mean, sorry, our parking consultant, he thought the number would be about 65 would be spaces. I mean, with the 58, which always want to have, you know, 10% or more overage, so that 65 would probably make sense. And then we looked at the possibility of creating on some of the islands a little more green space and replace a couple parking spaces in the main body. And then we could take several of those parking spaces directly adjacent to the residential home, because that's where the buffer needs to be created. That's the direct home rate across from us. And we could turn those into a green space and bank those for the future if they were ever needed for parking. But we wouldn't, we'd not build anything on them. They would be, you know, just green space.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. It would just be land banks so that if there is a parking issue, they could turn back into a parking stall. That's pretty common.
And my other question is, you've got the trash enclosure located in such a place on the property that it's very close to the adjacent neighborhood as well. Is it possible to swing that further?
What direction would that be?
West.
Direction, yes, thank you. Closer to the proposed transformer so that when that clanging happens every Wednesday morning or whatever it is, it's happening more onsite and not immediately next to the adjacent neighborhood?
So we could flip it to the other side of the drive, but we really need it along that drive aisle? Because that's intentionally 26 feet wide for a large vehicle like a driver's truck.
I figured that might be the case, but I just want some clarification on that. Thank you, Joe.
No, wait, don't go away. I'm going to go next because you're up here. So one of the things is interesting, you're going to increase the height of the wall, which is now like one of those poured concrete walls. But how are you going to do that? I mean, I'm just curious. Maybe that's a means and method thing, but what is your intention there?
Well, the wall seems to be in good shape. We had our structural engineer take a look at it. The idea would be to put some formwork, pour on top of it, and then paint the wall so it looks like it's one wall.
Okay. I think the second panel from the north end is listing a little bit. There's some trees that may be affecting it.
It'll be repaired in good shape.
Okay, just interested. Okay. Other questions for these guys? Mr. Ellison.
Have you guys given any thought to making it mixed use with two levels of residential and a first level of? No. Yes? Okay. Thank you. They stick with what they do best, which is building multifamily.
I'm sorry?
They stick with what they do best, which is building multifamily. Yeah. And I think part of the, unfortunately, part of the, if you did have somebody interested in it, they're not. But unfortunately, there are a number of vacancies along Rochester Road in stores already. And so I think it would be hard to, fresh to convince somebody to build that. Okay, yes.
All right. Mr. Grantian.
So a couple of quick questions on some of the things that were listed on the community benefits, particularly the lighting and the Energy Star appliances. My question here is, if it weren't for the energy efficiency that's in the guidelines, would you be installing something different in this project? I guess my question is, would you install anything other than LED lighting if it weren't for those community benefit guidelines? Would you realistically be installing anything other than Energy Star appliances? Since you're listing those as part of your community benefits, I'm just wondering what the alternative would have been if it wasn't a community benefit?
Well, I think there's a broad range of alternatives, but it is listed on the community benefits, and we felt it would be a good idea to comply. And add that as a community benefit.
I guess my question is, if you did not need to provide a community benefit, would you be, would the project be built with those things?
I think potentially there would be other types of appliances that could be used. And, yeah, but it is listed by the city as one of the acceptable, in the guidelines. So that's why we specifically said, yeah, we'll bear that cost and have those types of appliances installed.
Hold on, before you leave there. How do you respond to the assertion that you could make a return on investment on the property if you had 16 units?
Well, first, I want to create, I think there's been a little misunderstanding. The M2 allows 16 and a density bonus to 32. So we are asking for 10 more units. And without getting into the mathematics, the reality is very simple. First of all, we would like to have, we believe efficient use of space is important, and that is the construction that you see nowadays. The ordinance that we have was basically styled for garden apartments, not for the type of apartments that have been built for the last 30 years.
Understood.
And that's why we have the constant issue over density. And what you'd have to take into account, it's just not the land costs, but it's the construction costs have been inflated, interest rates are at an all-time high for construction projects, if you can even get it. And also, there's supply chain and labor issues. So all these things add up to the desire and the request for us to have the additional units. Also, we've moved the mass of the building as far to the road as possible, which we think is very consistent with how these buildings should be constructed. And we think all those add up to an excellent project.
All right. I'm just, I'm going to pressure a little bit because I'm giving you an opportunity here to address one of the issues here. It's that switch to 16, because the question from the audience was 16. How do you respond to the assertion that you could make a profit here with 32 units?
Well, you know, financially, they penciled it out, and it comes to 42 units in order to get a reasonable rate of return. That's the best I can offer to you without showing you every, you know, last financial report on those types of things. They've been doing this a long time. They've built a lot of units. They know what it takes to have a reasonable rate of return and to provide the amenities in a project that they would like to have. And that's what they're asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ellis.
I'd like to talk a little bit about general market conditions, not necessarily about this property, but what leads us here. We at this table don't initiate projects. People apply to us for permission to do developments around the city. And it's our obligation to hear those applications and to hear the public comment that arrives with it. That's our job here. And so, you know, we have to listen to what is brought to us. And we have to put that in the context of, as you've heard, our master plan, our zoning ordinance. Right now, we have a master plan that is 25 years old. It's a generation old. And the conditions, the demand for types of multifamily housing that existed in this city 25 years ago has shifted dramatically. So there is a different kind of demand in the marketplace. There is not a demand for the larger apartments that the existing zoning would allow. Young people want to move to our city. They don't need a big space. They're happy with a smaller unit. They're happy with their bike. They may not want a car. And so that is, those are the projects that come before us. I, like everybody else at this table, am not happy with the fact that developers are bringing us planned unit development proposals. And if you look at the early ideas coming out of our current master planning process, you will see that they too, or we as a community, agree that that is not a good solution to building our community responding to market demand. And what you're going to see come out of that master plan is concepts for development largely in corridors like Rochester, Crooks, Main, and the Mile Roads, where we have consensus on what we want to see there. And developers and people alike will know what to expect. And that will get us out of this whole planned unit development cycle. I just, like I say, I'm not happy with it. I will point out that a developer could build, so our current multifamily zoning requires 25-foot setbacks. This is a town of small lots, a lot of infill development. It makes it very difficult to build any sort of multifamily in a commercial corridor like this. But I will point out that if somebody wanted to build a commercial building or an office building on this site, they could basically build it lot line to lot line without any setbacks whatsoever. So just, those are the conditions that we're operating. And I will repeat, we have to consider what is brought for us in the market that we're operating in today in the year 2024. So that's just background.
All right. Okay, I'm going to pop off, if that's okay. So looking at the criteria, okay, there's two sets of them. One, 770-98 and 770-129 for changing zoning maps. There are a couple of issues that need to be addressed. I want to say, as a general proposition, I like this project. This project was intelligently designed. I think Mr. Krieger did a fine job, doing everything that they could to use this site without impacting the neighborhood. But in fact, that is the issue. The project by itself, I think it's a great project, but the issue is the relationship with the neighborhood. And the issues are 77098. Two, is it going to have, is it going to overburden the streets? Three, is it good for the health, safety, and welfare? And on 77129, what's the impact on traffic volumes in surrounding communities? To me, those are the issues. That's what we heard today. We heard lots of people talk, but the biggest theme was traffic. The traffic also is currently existing. This building isn't there. This project isn't there. And we heard lots of issues about the traffic in the parking lot, by the bar, on the street. That really is, has to be independent of this project because they already exist. The question, I think, before us, for me, is, are we going to look at this project in that prism? What do we do about that relationship and the concerns about the traffic?
So I think it's pretty powerful to actually look at the traffic. Let's say we have 60 cars there. I'm just going to use that number that are parked. And what do people do? You go north, south, east, or west, that's 15 cars. So if you have 15 cars potentially going down Genesee, even though we have the pork chop there, we're going to have a no left turn sign. But there's one added factor here. We believe that is, as much as everybody doesn't want one more car on their street, I think we can all agree that's a de minimis addition. But here's the critical thing, is that when you open up to the alleyway, you create a whole new means of access. And everybody here, what I've heard all the time is people And everybody here, what I've heard all the time is people are using our road to get to 14 Mile. Our tenants don't need to do that. They can go right through that opening. They can go right out the alleyway, right to 14 Mile, right there. And you know what? I've been over to that property five times. I've done it five times and I've been able to go right or left with very minimal problems or none at all. So people are going to figure that out. There's no need for our tenants to go down Genesee. In fact, it's going to take more time for them to get to 14 Mile. And if they need to go access north or south, they go right out the alleyway down to Rochester Road. So I, I think it's pretty simple from our perspective that we're not going to add to that traffic burden that already exists. They made that real clear. So I think by creating the way we've positioned this and creating an opening and at the suggestion of the city, taking a look at using that alleyway, that creates a benefit that we normally wouldn't have on a project like this. Because once you take away the curb cuts on Rochester Road, which is a goal of, of planning to take curb cuts off of some of these main artery roads, you still have to have two access points. That's for fire and safety issues. So you need to still have a fire truck or an emergency vehicle either come off Genesee because if Rochester Alleyway is blocked for any reason, or, or maybe they can't get down there, then they would come in off of Genesee. So I don't think from a traffic perspective, from our view of looking at this, with that addition of the opening into the alleyway that leads right to 14 Mile, I think tenants are going to figure that out like the first day they're there, if they need to get onto 14 Mile. They don't need to go down Genesee. There's no need for it at all because you have access right there through the alleyway onto 14 Mile Road. So I, I think that the traffic issue, we're not going to add to that traffic issue for that very reason. And that's a very tangible, I think, real reason.
All right. Okay. Questions?
What were the other issues?
Joseph. As, as fire department.
Microphone.
Okay, let's try again. Has the fire department looked at this plan and given any comment?
They do. We, we, every site plan that comes in.
Have they done it yet?
Yes, of course. They didn't have any objection to.
Would, did they comment if the entry to the alley was eliminated? What would that do to their plan?
Well, I don't want to speak for the fire marshal, so I'd rather, I'd rather have a drawing for him to comment on.
Okay, I see enough of these plans that I think it would impact fire apparatus ability to get in. If you only have one exit or one entrance off of Genesee and you've got to fire that unit, you just could clog everything up, so. Okay. All right. Mr. Esprit.
Thank you, Mr. Kusada. If I couldn't put my traffic committee hat on for a couple of minutes here. One thing that we're seeing in, in the city and it's happening everywhere, we've looked at a traffic patterns and how much they have shifted. And what has happened here is everybody is now driving with wayfinding in real time. And we're seeing traffic shifting in directions that 10 years ago it just would not have happened. So while I'm very sympathetic to what you're saying in terms of traffic, because we just had a roundabout put in at 13 and a half in Greenfield by my house as a result of all the wayfinding, because 20 years ago, nobody knew that from Greenfield from 14 to 13 Mile was a great cut through. But then you get Google Maps or Waze or whatever, and all of a sudden that, that whole dynamic shifts and again, the traffic counts went up like, it was like 560% or something. So unfortunately, what we're all dealing with, and unfortunately, because you're so close to 14 Mile, what we don't know and is so impossible to quantify, is somebody just going down 14 Mile and then Google Maps is make a left here, they turn onto Ferris and cut through. And unfortunately, to hold this petitioner responsible for what's really happening citywide on streets that are convenient to cut through, you know, I'm not so sure that that's a fair burden to place on them.
All right. All right. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone coming out to public comment tonight. I learned a few more things about this project. Certainly the alley was something that wasn't on consideration for me until it was brought up. I think all of us up here empathize, we live on neighborhood streets. I live on a street that, due to the, some of the burdens in the south part of town, I now get a ton of traffic or we get a lot more traffic than maybe what we would think is our fair share. I don't notice it. I can tell you that, you know, living on the street, you know, if you get a car a minute, yeah, there's some in the morning, a little bit of rush hour traffic, but, you know, my kids play in the front yard and we have balls that go out into the street and it gets a lot of volume. So I, I can, I can empathize, but I can also, you know, I live it and I understand and I appreciate the concerns about traffic and I, and I feel that I can relate to you due to my own personal situation, which is not near this part of town, but similar dynamic. You know, being mayor for eight years now, being on the commission for 12, I think Commissioner Douglas mentioned it, and, and I think it's, it's important to know that when we go to different neighborhoods, when we talk to different people, when we do community outreach surveys, we get a lot of feedback from both younger people and older people alike. Younger people say, hey, I'd love to live in Royal Oak, but I can't afford it. There's no housing options for me. Older people, you know, have mentioned they want to downsize, sell their home, they raise their family in and have a little bit more of a simpler life, travel. And the inventory isn't there for them to make that happen. So in general, in the community as a whole, there is a need for this type of housing. The question clearly is always where, right? So, you know, this area is at 14 in Rochester, clearly if, if you look there, even some discussions on the alley, there, there are businesses there, there's commercial activity, there are some multifamily homes nearby. Admittedly, they are single story, it looks, or maybe there's a, a double story there, but I think they're all single story. And so, you know, when you look at, at places where this need of the community can be met, you know, like Commissioner Douglas said, often it's going to be in these areas near Mile Roads and Main Thoroughfares like Rochester, Crooks, Campbell, et cetera. And I agree, the biggest concerns right now are parking and traffic. Most people that came here tonight expressed concerns about traffic on Genesee, frustrations about traffic. And I, and I think and I agree with Mr. Esprit, it's, it's a hard nut to crack to find out why that's happening, but it is happening. It happens randomly. We get people that come up and say, oh my gosh, my street all of a sudden became busy and I have no idea why. And they've come and they've petitioned and we've had lots of discussions with the traffic committee and we've put traffic calming measures in there that deter people, slow traffic down. I can tell you it's always a mixed bag. Some people want those measures because they like to drive 20 miles an hour in the street. Other people, they're like, I don't want other people on my street, but I want to go 45. So it's always, it's not, I'm not saying it's a clear example. And, and sometimes we have construction as well. We've had construction on 14. The county was doing a lot of construction on 14 Mile and that also affects where people go and, and their frustration. So to me, when I, when I look at this, I, in my mind, not that I'm discounting every other empathetic concern that's out there by the neighborhood, I'm, I'm hearing mostly traffic and parking. Parking, you know, as, as my vocation, it's something I'm familiar with. And understanding some of the dynamics with parking, we've seen, you know, being up here for, for so many years, I've seen a number of developments go up where parking has been a primary concern. I can give you an example, in my neighborhood on 11 Mile, there was an Amber apartment built that had a number of studios. And there was concern about, about parking and people going into the street and parking in the neighborhood streets. And the demand, a similar study that I think they came up with with 58 was done for that building. And we have not seen that at all. I drive my kids to school every day, drive by that, and there's empty spots in there. So I, I'm going to put a little bit of faith, just based on the experience of seeing these developments like this go up in various neighborhoods or corridors throughout the city over the years, that the, the parking and, and, you know, I mean, I'm not going to speak for the developer, but I have to imagine if developer has any sense, they're not going to underpark their building because they're not going to be able to rent their building. So I think, you know, the parking amount is sufficient. I don't think we're going to have bleed over into the streets. So while I, I think that is a legitimate concern, you know, tapping into my experience and witnessing the things I see in the data that's out there, I think that's a minor risk. From a traffic point of view, you know, what we have to weigh here is, and Commissioner Douglas brought it up, we don't get to pick and choose. There's like, well, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? Why is the city forcing? We're not, we're here to approve, give a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And we very well could have people, and, and I wanted to get that clarification, and it's not a threat, it's just something that could happen. If we're looking at traffic, a lot of the other options that are zoned for mixed use too, could and would certainly drive a heck of a lot more traffic there. Fitness centers, like a Planet Fitness, I mean, maybe not one that big. Food carryout, drugstores, like a CVS, Walgreens, laundromats, convenience stores. Tomorrow, somebody could go in there without coming to this board, the zoning board. I mean, you could shake your heads, I'm just telling you what the law says, what the ordinance says. I mean, that's what it says. So I encourage you guys to read it. It's, it's neighborhood zoning, you can look at it and it's very informative. So, you know, I'm not saying the, that we should be looking at the alternative, but when we look at the lowest traffic use, without question residential and even multifamily residential is the lowest traffic use of a piece of property and that, that is factual. It may not feel that way, but that is absolutely factual. I take that back. Maybe if it was a cemetery or a park, that would be a little different, but anything that anybody that's going to develop the property from a private point of view, that's going to be, you know, residential, multifamily residential is going to be the lowest impact on traffic. And I think there is some sense that not everyone's going to be leaving all at the same time. Not everyone is, you know, going in the same direction. And so I think that, you know, the, the, the traffic impact will be relatively de minimis given the, the dynamic of, of the, of the plan. So for me, it's, you know, it's difficult to weigh, you know, everything, but if you boil it down to the major concerns, traffic and parking, looking at it in terms of the risks of those being a significant burden to the neighborhood versus weighing that against a clear and ever need for a housing stock that both younger people and older people can use to continue to call Royal Oak or move here and put their roots here, I think is the, the, the weighing that's going on in my mind at the moment. So I'll just leave those comments there and listen to anybody else's thoughts and ideas.
Ms. Biki.
Follow up comment to your question about more green space, Mr. Esprit. I would agree that more green space rather than parking would be preferable in the, in that space. I think it probably would be manageable. But I would also still err to the side of the mixed use being the choice here. As you noted, garden apartments have been a mainstay in Royal Oak and the green space around them I think is significant and important, both for those living in the apartments as well as those who pass by them, walk by them. And again, if 16 plus a bonus can get to 32, maybe along Genesee, something that'd be two story, more garden apartment style and maybe that L, since it's an L, to give a little bit of air and breathing room to people on Genesee. So I would see this still as something that I'd like to see in mixed use. I don't like the fact that our community benefits are associated with PUDs. I think PUDs are not a good choice. And I would like to see the community benefits and our sustainability plan, something that's reflected in anything brought forward. Having, and so given the current state and what we've heard here, I'd like to see it something smaller. I appreciate a lot of the features that were brought forward, but I don't think it meets the criteria for a PUD.
All right. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, I'll just say that's a really good point. And I think that question has come up and I don't know that we'll ever have a clear answer on whether or not, you know, a 16 unit, 32 unit development would, you know, yield a profit and all of that stuff. I mean, that, that is ultimately, you know, the market's decision, right? So that's, that's the market. That's this developer or somebody else that decides to purchase the property. If they want to put a Chick-fil-A in there, maybe that's the highest and best use. I, so I think from, from my point of view, it's, guys, it's hard to concentrate and speak when, when others are interrupting, so I just ask that if you could keep it down a little bit. So the, the highest and best use, I mean, construction costs are higher, the availability to get an ROI on developments, cap rates are struggling. So I think that the cost of construction is forever going to be high for the foreseeable future. So I think over the last 10 years, we had a proposal that went there before and it's been pretty quiet. And I think these developers are probably taking a risk with the PUD, investing a lot of money to be, you know, denied or, or take the risk to say, okay, this is the business case that works. But I mean, I don't think it's obtuse, the, the 42 number, because they're also smaller versus having 32 larger apartments and townhomes. So I, I think that it's, that's a, that's a tough nut to crack that I don't think this body will ever know the answer to, but it's the market that drives what is best and highest use for the property. And the only petition we have in front of us tonight from the market is what, what we have in front of us. And so I think it's, you know, it's a fair question, but I don't know if there's ever a solid answer to it.
All right. Mr. Grantina.
So I've got a lot of consternation about this project. As, from the project standpoint itself, I don't really have many issues with the building. I think it's intelligently designed. I think it's a large enough site. They don't have lot coverage issues. The biggest issue I have here is a.
Okay, Mike.
Is this better? I don't necessarily have issues with the project. I think it's intelligently designed. It's a large enough site. The biggest issue that I have here, sort of echoing some of Ms. Biki's thoughts, is I, I still believe and I'm very sensitive to the use of a PUD process and I'm not sure that in this case it's being utilized properly again. PUDs are really intended for sites that are challenging or difficult to develop and typically would need relief to reasonably get those properties developed. And the language that keeps hanging me up is that the benefits to the city would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without the PUD. The reason I have so much consternation with this one is the underlying zone, the existing zoning of mixed use too, does allow for the proposed use, just not to the extent that the developers are seeking. And a lot of the community benefits that are being highlighted, and again, I agree with Ms. Biki, it's unfortunate that we've sort of tied our PUD process to this community benefits guidelines, the community benefits list. But a lot of the benefits that are being proposed, I do believe that we could reasonably get without necessarily having to go through the PUD process with the existing zoning that's there in perhaps some other incarnation, some other project. And that's what's really tripping me up the most about this project is the use of the PUD process to seek approval for what's being proposed. I'm just not sure that we're utilizing the process the right way.
All right. I'm going to quickly respond to that. I know there's some anti-PUD abuse comments we've heard, and that's true, but PUDs are legal, okay? This is a legal process. If somebody uses their creativity, finds the, finds the right project that they can do through a PUD and they come before us with a PUD, it's legal. So we need to consider it on the merits. And I don't, myself, think considering it, that it's a PUD is a factor for me. I think we have to consider it on the merits that was brought to us. And I've already said what I think my issues are. My issues are the relationship to the neighborhood primarily having to do with the traffic. Project itself, I think it's a good project. So I'm focusing on those criterias that I mentioned before. Mr. Ellison.
The PUD process is something that's available to any developer and in here, kind of, what I was going to say, but, but absolutely, it's, it's a, it's a process that they're entitled to ask for. And if they ask for it, then we need to listen to it. I've been on this commission long enough to know that we've had some very, very successful PUD projects and we've had some not so successful PUD projects. Each, you've got to look at each one individually. This particular project itself, regardless of the PUD process, I think is a good and well-designed project and I think they've addressed a lot of the concerns. But it's not unlike dozens of other projects that I've seen at this table. I've been sitting at this table since 1994 and, and except for the time I was in Lansing, I, I've seen for 20 some years, I've been working on projects in this community and I've, I've seen it all. And, and the traffic problems you mentioned, I'm not going to, I'm not going to dismiss them, they're real, they're real to you, they're real to your street. I will use an example, though, that on my street, when I first moved into my house in 1997, we had 2,100 cars on our street a day. But that was because my street was at at the expressway entrance. I'm right there at 696 and Mohawk, and so we had cars coming. So we figured out ways to get around that. I still have in my neighborhood, for many reasons, only about 1,000 cars a day, which is still a lot of cars, and there's a lot of kids, there's a park in our street, but I think it's the same 1,000 people, and they know how to drive on the street and not to create a problem. So it's something we as neighbors all live with, we get the occasional speeder, we get the occasional problem, but for the most part, we've dealt with it. And, you know, I put my 1,000 cars a day in front of any other neighborhood, and there's a reason why I had that much, but I've accepted it. But I looked at the, we did the development of 13 Mile and Rochester, we did that a number of years ago, and we had a huge neighbor response to that one, and it wasn't pretty, they weren't happy, and it was all the same problems. It was traffic, and it was parking, and it was intrusion in the neighborhood, it was buildings are too high. I mean, this is all the stuff we hear. We've got to take all that information that we get, all the feedback we get from the neighbors, the information we get from the developers, and try to put it all together to make it a package that'll work. Sometimes we do it, sometimes we don't. But on that 13 Rochester project, it was very hard, and we put something together, neighbors weren't happy with us, but in retrospect, I look at it, and as far as I know, unless someone's got information I don't have, it's worked. It's been a very successful project. There's a lot of people living in that neighborhood now, I know a lot of the concern they have are people are going to cut up, turn off a 13 Mile and cut up Midland to miss the light at 13 Mile Road. It hasn't materialized, so that's one I consider successful. We've got other projects all over. Apartment buildings, or even large developments of businesses, we're all dealing with the same, impact of neighborhood, traffic, parking. All we've got to do is get creative. Every street in the city belongs to every resident or anybody that drives on the roads of the state of Michigan, because they're all funded by the state. And so, people say it's my street, well, yeah, but living on it, it's ownership. I call my street, you know, my street, but it's not my street. It's open to anybody who needs to travel to get from point A to point B, and they pay taxes just like everybody else, they pay gas taxes, and they pay for the maintenance of those roads, and, you know, and they're used, and they're entitled to use them. So, again, kind of running around in a circle here, saying that your problems are not unique. They're your problems, they're unique to you, but they're not unique to the challenges we face at this table. And we always try to make the best sense of it, you know, there's never full winners, there's never full losers, but we try to do the best we can, and again, to benefit the community. It's what we're all about. I mean, I've been devoted to this community now for 35 years, and I wouldn't go anywhere else, and I love it, and I'm proud of it, and I want to keep it that way, but sometimes it's not easy, and sometimes, you know, you receive criticism, we received criticism here tonight, but I know I do the best I can, and I'm assuming that these folks do the best they can, and it would be much nicer if people would listen to what we say about projects and not throw personal comments and dispersing our reputation, so.
All right. Ms. Esbry.
Mr. Esbry, in the interest of getting this moving down the road, I'm prepared to offer a motion to approve the rezoning from mixed use two to a planned unit of development.
All right. You know what, we're going to... Okay. We're going to take a recess, we're going to take a recess if this happens.
Good, take a recess.
Good night. You can't answer it, so good night.
Good night.
Can you answer that? Just answer it.
Please. You know, you're disrupting it for everybody, not just us, but for other people who have projects. They're waiting their turn, this is totally unfair, and I ask you one more time to behave yourself and manage yourself, and you too, I know you want to say something, but don't. Okay.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take a brief recess so we can get order.
I second the motion.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Hi.
Or, or final. But this is just for the PUD recommendation.
We'll talk about this.
The city commission as well, right?
Right, that's who we're recommending it to.
Yeah, we recommend it, then they don't have another.
Right, the city commission has to vote on it. Because of rezoning, only, only the city commission can rezone something. Commissioner Douglas.
I guess, I thought this was all one. I didn't, I, I don't see in the, in our text where there are... Oh, okay.
Uh, page nine, I believe.
Are you looking at the agenda?
Uh, page nine of the write-up.
Oh, wait here. I'm on page nine. Fine, if, if, you're right, it's in two parts. Right? All right, fine.
Okay, so we have, we, we have motion, we have a second to make the recommendation. I guess I will start with a little discussion here. As I said before, I think that the criteria, the 7798, C1 through 6, and 770129A through I, from my point of view, they've, those have all been appropriately addressed. And we should also keep in mind that the first set of criteria for the PUD, the petitioner is required to make those showings. On the rezoning, that's this 770129, these are criteria for us to consider, sort of two different things there. And in my, from my point of view, the, the issue was the traffic. I would say on the, on the PUD recommendation, this is 77, 770982, about the burden on the, on the streets. It says that they have to demonstrate it will not be an unreasonable burden, and I think that's important, because I, I would take a little issue with the petitioner. I think that, obviously, if you're going to have a new building, whatever it is, you're going to have a increase in the traffic to some degree. The question for us is, is it unreasonable? And I think if the, if the traffic is turned to Rochester, myself, I don't think it will be unreasonable. It, it will be an increase, but it won't be unreasonable, so I'll be supporting the motion.
Can I jump in real quick?
Yes.
So there's a suggested resolution that starts on page nine, if, if the planning commission considers approval as presented a preliminary or final PUD. So is, they, there must be a distinction, a choice in your motion as to whether you want to make that preliminary or final. Again, preliminary gives them six months to come back in front of you with, for consideration of final. If you consider it final, you can modify any of the items below, such as under C when it reference, if you're interested in modifications to the drive approach or what have you.
Well, I'm getting mixed signals here, because it was my intention, just to speak strictly to the rezoning, and then make a separate motion for either a preliminary or a final site plan that addresses all those issues. If you're saying that that isn't appropriate...
It's all packaged into this suggested...
So that's what Ms. Douglas was saying.
And I was confused as well, then.
Yeah, so, I apologize. So, then let me restate my motion to approve the rezoning for mixed use too, and planning unit development, and to a preliminary site plan, not a final site plan, to construct a 3.5-story dwelling located at 4704 Rochester Road. And in doing so, and having it be preliminary, so they have, how many months to come back, Mr. Murphy?
Six.
Six months to come back? And I'll, please, my fellow commissioners, you know, if you have things on your mind as it pertains to the preliminary site plan, I'm more than willing to, to amend my motion accordingly. But my main two issues are, we want to put into, into writing that we want a right turn only facing Rochester. And then, I still think that this part, that this is overparked. 58 may, may not be enough, 65 seems to be the sweet spot that, uh, that has been alluded to a handful of times. So I would make the motion that, you know, to have no more than 65, and then at which point the petitioner can reconfigure their parking. Hopefully, by eliminating, in eliminating, you know, 14 spots, we can create greater buffers for the neighbor, for the neighbors immediately to the east, so they can get as much surrounding as possible. That is now my motion.
Okay, that is a, a different motion. The motion is to make the recommendation to approve the rezoning as a PUD, and approve the preliminary site plan with right turn only onto Genesee, and no more than 65 parking spaces.
That is correct, but again, I am amenable to changes.
Okay, do we, I think we need to have a second on that, because amended motion. Do we not?
Oh.
Okay, is there a second to this motion? All right, I don't hear a second.
I will say, if it was, if it was an emotion to give final approval, you might hear a second.
Well, but that's not on the table. So, but we're sitting, the motion is what it is, so I think that...
I think it's dead for lack of a second, so I will sit back and see what my fellow commissioners have to say.
All right, is there a different motion? Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, I would submit, I would submit a motion for, where is it here? A, for a final PUD plan, which allows no fewer than 65 off-street parking spaces, which is item C4. And, Mr. Murphy, you can tell me if there's text in here about the driveway, and adding a requirement for a right turn only onto Genesee.
Okay, so we have the motion to make the recommendation to the city commission to approve the rezoning to PUD, and a final site plan that says no fewer than 65 parking spaces, and right turn only onto Genesee. Correct?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
All right, motion is seconded. Is there a discussion on this motion?
Yeah, when we approve something with a, with a six-month contingency, it's often, almost always, because there are things that we want the proposer to fix. And yet, the only two things that we're fixing here are things that can easily be addressed as part of the, the text that we offer here. So, I'm content to give final approval, and certainly not final approval, final recommendation to the city commission, which will ultimately act on this.
All right, Ms. Resprey.
And Mr. Casada, and Ms. Douglas, I made my motion the way that it did, and to have it be amendable, in case other commissioners came up with something that would necessitate them coming back in the next six months. But obviously, the board doesn't feel that way, so moving forward to a final site plan makes sense.
All right, any other comments, any other discussion, before we call for the vote? Okay, I'm going to call for a roll call vote here, and I know I was picking Ms. Beaky, but I'm going to do it again.
Um, it, consistent with the statements I made before, that I think it should be still under mixed use, I have to vote no.
All right.
Yes.
Yes?
I'm a yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we have six to one, motion passes. Congratulations. All right, next order of business. My agenda. All right. Next order of business is SB 240405. This is a site plan to construct a two-story outpatient medical clinic on 13 Mile, 3828 13 Mile. Mr. Murphy, can you give us an introduction of this project?
Certainly. What we'll do is, if we can, if you gentlemen can close the door, perfect, you read my mind. The petitioner owns the vacant property on the north side of West 13 Mile Road, and it's in the Office Service Zoning District. They're proposing to construct a two-story, about an 88,000 gross square foot building with 317 surface parking spaces. The first floor has traditional medical offices, and by our calculation, it has 33,825 square feet of usable floor area. The city zoning ordinance requires, for that use, the ground floor, 171 parking spaces. The second floor is outpatient medical procedures, surgical center. And that, the parking calculation for that floor is 95 parking spaces. So we add the two together, the ordinance requires no less than 266 parking spaces. And again, they, they're providing 317 parking spaces. They can speak to why they've elected to have a, a greater amount of parking than what's required under the ordinance. You'll see on the drawings, on the north side of the property, and the west side of the property, the parking lot doesn't go all the way to the property line on the west side. Separating the parking lot from the adjacent single-family neighborhood is about 11.9 feet from the edge of the parking lot to the, to the property line. And they're proposing to landscape that area. On the north side, the landscape buffer varies in, in depth from 17, excuse me, 12.8 to 14.4 feet. And it has dense landscaping, and the petitioner can address the difference in elevation. So if one were driving north on, in, on the drive aisle of, inside the parking lot, and they're driving north toward where the residences are across the property line, there's a difference in elevation there. Coupled with landscaping, the petitioner can talk to, talk to that point as to how it will screen the headlights as vehicles are coming forward from the properties to the north. There is a, and I'm going to zoom in on it, if I can. Directly adjacent to the east, there's a small medical building that has two driveways on each side of the building. The proposed driveway to this site is very close, extraordinarily adjacent to that drive aisle for that adjacent medical building. And staff is recommending that Corwell work with the property owner to try and eliminate that private property's driveway, and have a shared access agreement. And I'm going to hover over it on the site plan. So here's the drive aisle that was referred to for the adjacent medical building. Here are the proposed drive entrances to the proposed medical clinic. It would be to eliminate the adjacent drive approach, and to have a shared access agreement. So individuals seeking to get to that private medical building to the east would have to cross this site, and they would maintain an ingress egress easement. If they're unable to accomplish that, we recommend that they work with us, staff and the city engineers specifically, to relocate the, the drive entrance to this proposed location, so that it's offset from the drive entrance to the medical building adjacent to it. I think that's an important point to, to bring up.
And, and were they open to that?
They are here to discuss that.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's my quick summary, and I think it will open up some questions.
All right. Are there, are there any questions for the department, or before we call the commissioners, or before we call the petitioners forward? Okay, hearing done, I'm going to call the petitioners forward. Come on up, introduce yourself, your team, and tell us why you're entitled to the relief you're seeking.
All right, I am Tom Delenbeck from Hobson Black Architects. So we are the designer of the building here.
Yes, good evening, Jim Butler with PEA Group, we're the civil engineer for the project.
We have representatives from Corwell, so they can speak to any operational issues with the building. So yeah, as Mr. Murphy explained, it's a two-story outpatient services building. It's really anchored by a surgery center on the second floor, so that's why the uses are different between the two floors. You know, it's an amenity to the community to not have to navigate into the hospital to get quick access to medical care in a convenient outpatient setting, so the, yeah, it's a very typical kind of outpatient building. We have a main drop-off in the, what would that be, the southeast corner. We anticipate most of that east parking lot being used for the day-to-day patients coming in to seek services. The west parking lot is more envisioned to be the staff parking lot. There is an entrance on that side, that would be the staff entrance. And then, the, the trash and service area is on the northwest corner of the building. And on the northeast corner, you'll see sort of a double driveway there, that is the surgery discharge. So if you're coming out of surgery, kind of a private exit to leave the building, so.
I'm sorry, where was that again?
The northeast corner of the building, where you see that island up there. Yeah, that's the surgery discharge area, so not a main entrance, just the occasional patient leaving.
Yes, in regard to the landscaping along the north perimeter, Mr. Murphy's right, we do have approximately 12, 14 feet of green space there. Could we go back to landscape plan? That'd be helpful. There we go, thank you. Well, we've decided from a landscape perspective to meet the ordinance requirements for screening, since it is a residential development to the north. We have a series of evergreen trees, fir trees, con cover surfaces, staggered at 20-foot separation to create that buffer. Also, the grade along that property line, we're going to be lowering that, so our site will be about three foot lower than what the grade is along the common property line. So I think that's important to understand.
Which, which property line?
The property line to the north, it'll be three feet higher, our parking lot will be three feet lower. So we're going to be a three-foot differential between the surface of the parking lot and the elevation at the north property line.
All right, and as, as long as I got you on the subject, this is designed to keep the, in part, to keep the car lights away from the homeowners, but also is it to keep the water on your own property, since you're the engineer?
Yes, we are, we are required to make sure that the water stays on our property, and we manage and control it.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't want to flood the, the kids' ball field there from the school, of course.
That is correct.
Yes, so, you've, you've considered that?
Yes, absolutely. That's a requirement of the city.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Have any other questions? We have to answer.
All right, are there other questions for the engineer? Or the architect? All right, seeing none, I have a seat, and we're going to open up the discussion for folks from the public who would like to speak on this issue, right here.
There are a number of us that...
Introduce yourself, please.
...from zoning houses. I'm the person that's lived there the longest, I'm going to give you guys some background. I'm Robert Schneider, live on Hillside Court, and the property in question is right directly behind my house. I hope you all received an email that our little community group sent out, it had some, some pictures, layouts, it also had a link to the rezoning hearing from 2012 that discussed this very thing. This project actually started in 2012, and that, before that, Beaumont had bought the, the Parker School, and part of that agreement was building five new houses to block off the Yorba Linda access, make sure there was going to be no development all the way up right smack on Yorba Linda. That was accomplished. Beaumont then went ahead and bought two apartment buildings, and then came to the, the zoning board for a, a rezoning from the apartment zoning to the, to the office zoning, which it is now. Excuse me. So I'm a long-term owner, and when I bought my house, I expected the two apartment buildings would always be there as a buffer. It was in the master plan, it was zoned as such. And so when this all started to happen, we naturally were very concerned. So once the rezoning request went in, we, as a group, most of us came to that rezoning meeting, actually, Mr. Ellison happened to have been there that time. And at the hearing, we residents were requesting the rezoning to be rejected until we get assurances of some kind that we would be accommodated. Because of Jim Ellison, Tom Hollick, Beaumont staff that were present at that time in 2012, we were told this is a good organization, we would take care of our needs beyond minimal zoning requirements, beyond minimal zoning requirements. That is why we backed off and said, okay, rezoned. We all expected to then work with these people in 2012, and design was started, and then abruptly stopped. We're here 12 years later, now going over a plan for that site, not expecting that lapse in continuity. So I stayed in touch with the Beaumont government relations for as much as I could for 12 years, including most recently Corwell. They were made very aware of our concerns, and we had a meeting in September that all this was discussed. They are not ignorant of either the history or the, the, the request for us to get some accommodation.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, other members of the public wishing to speak? Please introduce yourself, three minutes.
Sure. Name's Frank Fidel. My wife, Lee, my daughter Anna, and I, and our two dogs live at 3815 Yorba Linda Boulevard, directly behind, north of the planned Corwell facility. We've lived in our home since 2008, have always tried to be good neighbors and support our community. Royal Oak's a great place to live. The nature of businesses in Royal Oak has been congenial, and is a hallmark of the city. We hope to see that trend continue. But given the recent events related to planning for a new medical building, we're not so sure that's the case. I wanted to give you a little in-depth look at what the north end here on this image looks like. This is, let me focus and see it. This is the north end. So this is where the building will be, this is the north end, which is where these trees are, the lined trees. There's a berm existing there. Yeah. Sure, sure. There's a berm existing there, a large, about seven-foot berm, running the length of all the houses, buffering us from this area. That was intentionally put there, and is part of an agreement, a sales agreement, which we have some documentation of, we haven't had time to find the rest of it yet, because we didn't know about this. Corwell didn't contact us. We had to contact them, we saw surveyors in our area. So this area is supposed to be buffering us from this area here, and the proposal is to remove that berm, which it seems there's some legal precedent for them leaving it there, as they agreed to actually build it and leave it there as a buffer zone. So we have some concerns with the way that things are designed. In addition, all around the rest of Beaumont, there is a large buffer zone. If you look around, anywhere around Beaumont, there's at least 60 to 70 feet of space. This is proposed to be 15 feet from the back of our fences approximately. So it's not maintaining the typical kind of congenial atmosphere that's been presented by Beaumont in the past. We have some other issues here, some other images here, so you can kind of see what this looks like. So again, so you get a view of it, what we see right now, what we saw in 2010, how we've maintained and built up the space here, that it looks beautiful, it's a nice buffer zone. But here's the document I talked about, that talks about from 2007, a future berm for, per agreement with the developer in Beaumont Hospital, the berm to be there where it is now. That's an agreement. So we'd like to have that somehow taken into consideration before you guys end up saying, yes, we're accepting the proposal they have put forth towards you. I've worked in healthcare for 18 years. I now teach at the university, to teach students to become healthcare professionals, to help people. I love having a facility next to my, you know, home, within a reasonable distance, but it's the approach of not consulting with the neighbors to see, is there a way to do this in a congenial way, is the thing I have the most issue with. And, and again, if there's a legal issue here where they're actually bound to not remove the berm, that needs to be addressed before you, I think before you approve any kind of plan they have. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Right there.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lee Fidel. I'm Frank's wife, and we've lived at 3815 Yorba Linda for, since 2008. My family and I purchased our home from the developer, David Gans, from Winnick Homes, and are the original owners. When we purchased it, Mr. Gans informed us, and as Frank said, that there is a legal document, we just haven't had time, since Corwell only had a meeting with us on March 26th. It hasn't given us much time to do a lot of research, but that Beaumont agreed to the installation of the berm as a buffer, and I think it had something to do with Parker School as well, their sale to Beaumont. And so we've seen that in some of the forms that we found. So installation of the berm as a buffer for any new construction that would occur in the vacant lot adjacent to our property. He also said that we could purchase, which we all did as neighbors, and plant trees. So we all have evergreen trees, they're really big now, and they're really nice to block the noise, to help with noise abatement from the hospital. The developer also installed, so all of us have sprinkler systems in that berm that Corwell's going to destroy. So I don't know who's going to pay for all of our sprinkler systems, too. We've been watering that berm, and we've been caring for it since 2008, and I've been cutting it for that many years, and Beaumont hasn't paid me, so I haven't seen any money from that. So anyway, we have been, Beaumont was a good neighbor by looking for, toward the future, and giving us some security with the berm. When we met in 2012, I believe, with the community relations person there, they were really concerned, they had us meeting, but then COVID happened and everything, so. We were also told by someone from the planning or the building department that our houses were a buffer to the neighborhood when the school sold the land to Beaumont, and that the berm was a buffer for us, if anything was to go in in that vacant property. And, and Beaumont was going to build closer to 13 Mile Road, it was going to be a small, maybe daycare. Why would they put in such a large berm and encourage the planting and us spending all the money on trees and the sprinkler system, just to destroy it for a few parking spaces that admittedly Corwell Health told us at their meeting no one would be using? I think it's like 36 parking spaces. Knowing that the berm was installed for our protection and security was a factor in our home purchase as well. We felt that we could tolerate the noise from the hospital, the helicopters that cracked the walls, sirens, generators, car alarms that go off, because the berm and the trees would offer the protection needed to mask all that noise. Now, without much warning, Corwell wants to remove the berm and install parking spaces 15 feet from our fence. It's more aesthetically pleasing to see a berm and trees and hear the birds at least once in a while, instead of parking spaces right behind. Many of us, many of the neighbors have children and dogs, and the added noise is going to affect them. Thank you for your time. Sorry.
Ma'am, before you walk away, an ample disclosure, I went to bank at our doors today, see that a lot of data bank, I just sort of get a look, you know, from, from your perspective, but also when I got done with my meeting, I put a full call in, I put a full call in to Mr. Murphy, because like I said, you know, at the end of the day, we do have to follow the law, obviously. And so what is the city's position as it comes to potentially retaining that berm?
Let's talk about that after public comment.
Fair enough.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Other members of the public, right there. Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Anna Fidel. I'm reading this letter on behalf of my neighbors, Mark Trapani and Giovanni Alvedo, who could not be here tonight. As we are unable to attend the latest planning committee meeting, we are authorizing our next-door neighbor to speak on our behalf. Their concerns are our concerns, and we are aligned on several issues related to this new development. Please consider this letter as our agreement to the statements they deliver at the meetings. We are the original owners of 3821 Yorba Linda Boulevard, one of the five newer homes built on the former Parker Elementary site. We have lived at this address for over 14 years. At the time we were purchasing this home, we were informed by Winnick Homes, the builder who had an agreement to the construction of the home and berm directly behind our home, that the creation of the berm was an agreement between Beaumont Hospital and Winnick Homes that was to act as a buffer between our home and any future development on the vacant land behind our home. We were allowed to, and would be responsible for the planting slash maintenance of any grass, vegetation, and/or trees planted on our side of the berm. We would be responsible for all costs associated with this. Please note that the builder installed a sprinkler system on the berm fed by water we provide and pay for. We have tended to fertilize, watered, and mowed our side of the berm throughout the entire 14 years that we have lived at this address. The berm would remain regardless of any future development, as it was part of the agreement between the hospital and the builder. The location and size of the berm are noted in the final site plan package drawing, which was finally approved on July 4th, 2007. We are opposed to the proposed removal of the entire berm, which includes a sprinkler system that we would be responsible for the cost of repair, the removal of trees that we paid for, planted, tended to, supplied water to at our own cost, the loss of the green space, as well as the quality of life provided by that green space. Over the years, the bird, uh, sorry, the berm and the trees have been, oh my God, home to nesting birds every spring and summer, and we would be greatly saddened by this loss of nature near our home, as well as the quality of life provided. What we find most concerning is the fact that the removal of the berm and trees is to make room for overflow parking, which according to Corwell's newest leader, would probably never be used. And if used, the placement of the parking spots is such that car headlights will be pointed directly to our home. This would create more of a light nuisance for our homes than what already exists. Leaving the berm as is would block those lights. Lastly, the proposed facility plans for the placement of the refuse containers and generators relatively closely... relatively close to our home. This appears to conflict with the Royal Code, which states, "Consumers and enclosures shall be located away from public view insofar as possible on that side which is opposite or at the maximum distance possible from adjacent residential uses." As well as that, ground-mounted generators should be located away from the public view insofar as possible and on that side which is opposite or at the maximum distance possible from adjacent residential uses. In closing, we are kindly asking for your consideration in rejecting the proposed plan in its current form to allow for a new plan, which does not involve the removal of the berm and trees directly behind our home slash between our home and the proposed new commercial building, as well as consideration of a different location in the refuse containers and generator. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other members right here in the green?
Hello, my name is Case Hensler. All right, so I've been to a number of these meetings, starting back in 2012 when it was Beaumont before Corwell Health, and, uh, my understanding through all the meetings that we've had with the hospital, uh, that we've had basically, uh, one concern, which is safety or privacy, so two concerns, safety, privacy. And, uh, there's two things that we have consistently floated towards them, which is to have a berm between the houses, which is already on the north end, so it shouldn't be removed, or where I am, where I'm on the west side, uh, where we currently have a very thin wood fence, my understanding is, uh, I've, I've been asking for that to be replaced with a nice, uh, brick wall with some kind of, uh, decorative side facing our residencies, and, uh, so I personally don't feel as though any of those situations have been met. Uh, I don't, there's been no talk of putting a wall up to help separate us. I don't want people to be able just to walk over into my lawn, even though we have some trees that they're going to put in there, that doesn't stop strangers from walking directly into my wall or lawn necessarily, and the fence that's currently up there is, is pretty cheap, and I do repair it every single year as is, even though it's not mine. The wind constantly blows down sections. So I'd like to see that, uh, replaced, and I, I'd hope that they don't touch the berm on the north end, because that is really just going against everything that we have talked about, which is, uh, a bit disappointing, because we agreed to the rezoning because it was Beaumont and because they were, were good neighbors. Unfortunately, uh, you know, things have changed since, uh, uh, the, uh, when this first started, and, um, um, they seem to listen, but they didn't hear us, I kind of feel like. So I, I'm advocating that they don't touch the berm on the north end, and that they replace the, the wooden fence with a nice wall to help buffer us from, uh, the, the traffic that will be created in the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any, right there. Please introduce yourself, three minutes.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Daniel Lynn. Um, I am a, um, active physician in the community, have been practicing in the, uh, greater Detroit area for about the past 20 years. Um, I specialize in neuroophthalmology and ocular plastics, and I've taught, uh, multiple medical students or residents in this area for the past 20 years. For the past 12 years though, I've, I have been a resident of Royal Oak, and I reside in a property just adjacent at the north lot, uh, to this, uh, Corwell property. Um, so initially, I guess when we moved in 12 years ago, um, there was some concern, I saw the property of Corwell, of Beaumont at the time, and I was concerned about what kind of security issues or privacy problems it would be, but I was very reassured by the realtors, the agents, they said, they assured me that the developers had a, um, contract in there that that was, that berm would be there, and that if there was a future construction, that there would be some type of barrier to assure us the privacy and security. Um, and then I, in 2012, I remember they did, um, have a meeting, and then there was another meeting, um, prior to COVID that I, I had gone to, and it seemed at the time that, um, Beaumont was taking us under, uh, consideration and would work with us about it. Of course, COVID happened, and then four years just went by, and now, um, we didn't hear anything else about it until just recently, about two weeks ago, was the first that we heard about the site plan. No consultation, except because our, one of our neighbors actually found out about it and requested that. So, um, so this was quite a surprise to us. As a, um, a father of two young children, I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old. They play in the backyard, um, they pick the blackberries from the bushes and the, on the berm, they have, um, they sled in the winter time down that hill, um, and, I mean, I, I think they enjoy, um, you know, going, going out there in the backyard. This, um, berm is not that far away from the actual house and then our patio, so I, I am concerned that if they do destroy the berm as they are planning in the site proposal, that, um, the, the cars will be located basically according to that at the top of the berm as it currently exists, and that is pretty much in the area that the children, you know, currently play at. Um, so for other reasons, I, I am very concerned about the security issues, um, the parking lot being that close, the kids can just walk right over and get hit by a car. Um, people, strangers can cross over much more easily with the parking lot in place. Um, and then of course, there's also the, um, privacy issue. So those are the main reasons that I, I would be concerned about. Um, I would urge all of you to consider that and, um, encourage Corwell to take us, take the residents into consideration when they try to revise, hopefully revise their plans for the site plan. I also have a petition, a signed petition from all the neighbors, and I'd like to, uh, give this to you.
Hand it there. Thank you. Okay, thank you. This is just like, uh, copies of petitions, signed. Yeah, you can just hand them all there, and she'll pass them down. Thanks. All right, in the gray.
My name is Henry Zaluzki. I'm the owner of 3803 Yorba Linda Boulevard. It's adjacent, adjacent to the, um, the school. Uh, so I, I kind of want to second some of the concerns that we've brought up, particularly, you know, the, the privacy, the noise, um, lights. Uh, security is, is a particular concern and one because, um, destruction of the berm is going to make it easier for people to, um, basically go through our properties. Uh, both Daniel and I don't have a fence on, on the south side of the property, so during like, um, Woodward Cruise, people just trespass through our properties, just walk right through. The other houses do have a little bit of a fence, so that kind of prevents them from going through. Um, the other thing that's going to happen is currently we have like a natural barrier between us and the 13 Mile. Um, there is a gated entrance to the property, so most people cannot enter, cars can't come in, uh, when, when the building is built and it's opened up, the parking lot cars would be able to drive up, you know, all the way up to our streets, I mean, our, to the back of our yards. And what's, what we're hearing in a proposal is like a, you know, shrub fence. We don't feel that's secure enough. Uh, we feel we need something more substantial, like a, like a brick wall or something, and also sufficient height, so people just can't hop over and get into our, our neighborhood. Basically, we feel like that 13 Mile is being brought up to the back of our yards now, because easy access is not going to be restricted, anybody could get in there. Um, the other concern is that was brought up also is, we have, you know, overall, the, the five houses in, in the, uh, the west side, there's 46 mature trees that were planted there, you know, 12 years, 15 years. That's not something they could like have grown in a couple of years, you know? I mean, I don't know what they're going to put, little shrubs in there, that's going to take a long time. That, that helps to, uh, you know, visually, you know, you don't, you know, I don't get to see the hospital, I get to see like Christmas trees, so it's, you know, visually it makes a big difference, it also, it helps with the noise abatement and, and lights and everything else, so. For, you know, for the way that this has been proposed, didn't really solicit any of our input. Um, we did have some meetings in 2012 with Beaumont, and we did kind of, you know, tell them what our concerns were. This was sprung on us last minute, uh, we had to ask for it, to get additional information and, and kind of tell them what we're concerned, so, um, the way it's proposed, you know, we're, we're opposed to it, and we'd like to see some modifications to the plans.
All right, thank you. Uh, anybody else who's a hand, right there? Please introduce yourself, three minutes.
Hi, my name is Chris On, um, and I'm standing before you today, not just as a resident that's invested into our community, but also a concerned parent of a four and a seven-year-old who lives, and, and we live on the north side of, of the berm that's been talked about tonight in Yorba Linda. And for the last four years, I've relied on this seven-foot tall berm as a natural barrier that safeguards my children's play area from the commercialization to the south, whatever it might be. And when I purchased that property four years ago, I was assured that the north side of that berm would remain intact and in fact be my responsibility to maintain. There are 50-foot evergreen, maybe 40-foot evergreen trees out there, a few maple trees, sprinkler system. In fact, my home inspector even called out the infrastructure that I would have had to have maintained beyond my property line, because our water fed through it. Um, so naturally, being a vital buffer zone, I agreed to this, no problem. What troubles me is that I wasn't adequately informed by Corwell about this potential development that's going to happen next to my property. The proposed plan not only entails the removal of this barrier that I've been talking about, that we've all been talking about, um, but it also introduces this commercial waste and generator that, that sits right behind the very witch, uh, backyard that my children play in. Look, I, I've lived in Royal Oak for a long time, and I've seen a lot of good changes happen since I've been here, it's why I'm still here. I understand the need for progress, I understand the need for modernization, uh, just like extending a medical center to better serve our community, I get that. And my family and I are longtime patients of Beaumont, and we honor actually the fortune that we have to have their presence directly in front of our community. But the way that I feel that things have been handled in the last few weeks has not been right. There hasn't been enough honesty, and I feel that our concerns as residents have, have basically been ignored. My neighbors and I, take this, like, my neighbors and I, we're not advocating for the outright dismissal of plans to build there altogether. We're looking for time to collaborate with Corwell. We are neighbors, just as they are our neighbors, and we would like to engage in a constructive dialogue, not just with you all, but with Corwell, that's aimed at finding a compromise. And this is a compromise that not only honors Corwell's need to enhance their facilities, but also honors the longstanding good neighbor commitments that have been established, uh, that my neighbors had talked about earlier over the years. It's evident that other areas of this hospital have successfully upheld these principles, with clear separations between residences and commercial spaces. In fact, a lot of these situations have 40 feet of green, green, green space or tall masonry walls that separate the parking areas from the residence. And so all we're doing is requesting for more time to review this site plan, to come to a compromise with Corwell, that finds a solution that respects both sides of this, uh, of, of the berm, basically. So I'm just appealing to your sense of fairness, to your sense of responsibility to ensure that our community continues to thrive harmoniously between residents and commercial spaces, um, and especially in matters that, that I feel potentially impact safety and security. Thanks so much for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. Um, other, right there.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Doug Bager. Uh, my wife Janice and I live at 383, uh, Yorba Linda Boulevard with our dog Gracie, a retired racing greyhound. And we've lived on Yorba Linda Boulevard since 1985, which is nearly 39 years. And over these years, we've seen many changes with Beaumont, including the recent merger with Corwell Health. These changes include several additions at the 13 Mile Road main campus, the elevation of the emergency room to Level 1 Trauma Center, the introduction of helicopter patient transports, the creation of an allergy asthma center on the north side of 13 Mile, the demolition of the town and, and Burnside Apartments, the complete removal of the Northwich Hopping Center, and the creation of a Woodward Corners as a replacement. Each of these changes has impacted the neighborhood in both positive and negative ways. Nonetheless, we have been consistently supportive of the hospital and their efforts to further expand their footprint, enhance their world-class status. Our support has included the approval of the sale of the Parker Elementary property to Beaumont in 2007, and the approval of the 2012 of the rezoning of the town and Burnside Apartments, uh, from multifamily status. Over the past 17 years, we've anticipated consistently that the hospital would construct a clinic on the property. The proposed 88,000 square foot building is a significant addition to the Royal Oak campus for Corwell. It's truly a handsome building, world-class, and that should expand the healthcare services to the Oakland County community and, uh, other individuals beyond, but will have a heavy impact on infrastructure and increased traffic and sewage in, in our area. As my wife and I have been supportive of the hospital, uh, where we've been patients for many, many years, we asked that the planning commission delay approval until several important issues can be resolved with the hospital, as my neighbors have reiterated on several fronts. And we also feel that it's important for the city, uh, and the hospital to respect the needs of the neighborhood. We have agreements and understandings in the past that, uh, the good neighbor promises would be maintained. And we've been good neighbors with the hospital for many years, and we really like this cooperative relationship to continue, and we would love to have further discussions with them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, are there other folks who'd like to speak on the site plan, uh, here? All right, seeing none. We're going to close the public discussion, or public hearing part, uh, public comment, and, um, turn back to the commissioners. Do we want to hear, uh, from the petitioners further? Do we have questions? Ms. Bieg, you was first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it was almost a tie. Um, I, I guess I just wanted to say I appreciate for everybody coming, and I appreciate the comments a lot. Um, what I'm hearing from, um, from the residents near this space make me think a lot about our current sustainability and climate action plan that really is emphasizing including ecological buffers to any new development, um, retaining green spaces, and, and making sure that, um, as we move forward, we, we keep those things in place, both for the comfort of our residents, but also for the environmental issues. And so I would strongly support, um, something about a postponement in order to think about keeping that berm. And the other thing, um, and I heard in the introductory remarks and from the city and from the, um, petitioners, um, this, this site plan has more parking than needed. We know that we have too much parking. Royal Oak is one of the few communities that has, um, you know, we have bus stops near the, the hospital, we have a lot, a lot of walkability, we have a lot of residents as present here near our institutions, and we expect people to be able to access things on, in other ways besides cars, and so a hyper-urban style, I mean, excuse me, a hyper-suburban style, um, plan like this, I think is not consistent with, um, our city values or our city style, as it were. Um, and then it brings up to mind, um, the role of hospitals in cities is, is one that the academic and the urbanist Richard Florida warns cities about, because hospitals have a tendency to grow and take up more space. Um, and if they do in a way that's disrespectful, it really undermines some of the values around, um, both the property values and others, and so I would just take a lot of caution. I appreciate Beaumont, um, and Corwell now is taking over, but there are some issues around the new development in front, where there's not walkability and connectivity between the hospital and the stores. And so again, consistent with a high quality of life for residents, the green space and the walkable connections between the institutions that make up your whole campus is very important, as is the, um, transit and bike, um, accessibility, and it's less than it should be, um, in general, but more so for a city like ours that really emphasizes people having multiple options for how they move about.
All right, thank, Chris B.
Yes, sir, thank you. A couple of us at this table, you know, the guy with the white beard and I, were back on the planning commission, uh, in 2007 when this was originally proposed. And I do remember discussion of the berm, and I didn't know if it was something, how concrete it was, but after meeting with her over there, I did put a call into Mr. Murphy's office so we could get some clarification as to the legal standing of that berm, and, well, Mr. Murphy, could you please, uh, enlighten us?
Well, we'll, we'll start with the fact that what they're proposing is a permitted use. So it's appropriate for the planning commission to approve the site plan contingent upon it meeting all the city standards, including what you believe is an appropriate screening surrounding the property and any adjacent uses. So whatever you determine to be the most appropriate, there's a lot of latitude in the ordinance, but it is a permitted use. Therefore, under the city's zoning ordinance standards, there was no notice of provided to property owners within 300 feet, like there would be for a project that's a special land use, or a planned unit development, et cetera. So that, that's the background on it. The, it's appropriate for the planning commission to determine whether the landscape plan that's in front of you to, tonight, tonight, is sufficient to provide screening to the adjacent land uses, specifically the single-family properties, uh, whether you think it, that should include the, or retain the, the existing berm, all of it, some of it, whatever, it's, it's entirely up to you. In terms of the berm itself, we reviewed, uh, quickly through our records, and we did find in 2007, Beaumont had provided the city with a letter that indicated that they were modifying the land contract between Beaumont and the developer at the time of the five home sites, Winnick Homes. And the, the written comment to us in the letter was that they were adding a provision in the land contract that said that they would reserve essentially that space for, for a landscape buffer on their property. Now whether that means it's legally binding from there on out, I don't believe that's up to us to make that determination at this table. But what you have in front of you is a permitted use, it's appropriate. It's appropriate for you to determine whether the buffer, the landscape buffer that's proposed or some modifications are necessary, and of course, circulation, lighting, all those other aspects. The issue that seems to be surfacing the most is the landscaping between the single-family neighborhoods and the proposal.
All right, thank you. Did somebody have a question there?
No, I just want to thank them.
Oh, yes, thank you. I'm a little confused about some of the facts I heard. Mr. Esprit went out there and looked at the site, so maybe you can answer, or maybe we have to go to the engineers, or maybe we even have to ask some of the residents. The site plan says there's an existing fence to remain on the north property line, but I also heard people say, "My kids go up on the berm." But the berm is on Corwell's property. So is there a fence there, or is there not a fence there?
There's no fence.
Let's have a look.
All right, the fence, there is actually three styles of fence.
I'm going to go ahead and bring up the survey while you're talking.
Okay. On the far, far west end, coming up from 13 Mile Road, is chain link fence. When it hits the residential, it turns to, there's a portion that's a brick, stone, cinder block wall, and then as it runs, Mr. Murphy, as it runs along the residential, it's a six-foot-high stockade board-on-board fence.
That's north to south.
Yep, it turns, it goes east-west, and it turns, goes north-south. That's board-on-board. And then it turns to a point where there's a little notch, as you can see. That, it stops, and then it becomes, it comes across, and then it becomes a wrought iron fence, which is five feet north of the Corwell site. The last two single-family homes, there is no fence. So there's a gap in there, in the last two homes that are farthest to the east. So there's a gap, a wrought iron fence or an architectural-style fence, and then there's a board-on-board fence.
All right, that gave me some facts I didn't have. The berm is entirely on Corwell's property?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Well, let me ask you a question. What's your response to the homeowners here today? Do you have any response there?
To which?
Well, to the concept that there was a promise that the berm would remain.
Can we show you the letter?
No. I'm asking Corwell if they would like to make a response. That's what I would ask, if you have a response.
I think Corwell Legal has looked at, and so far, we haven't found any actual agreement. I've seen the clip from the drawings that say per future agreement or such, but we don't, we haven't seen it. If there was an agreement between Beaumont and the developer, I don't have that. And was it transferable to the current homeowners? We don't know.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I have a, Gary, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to continue that line of questioning a bit. So maybe more independent of the...
Mike.
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 Yeah. My phone went off telling me it was my bedtime, so I have a little pass on this one. So the, independent of the legalities, which would be more of a civil nature, I'm not an attorney, but I would imagine that would be a dispute between property owners. It is a consideration because, you know, of the past history for us, but independent of that, the idea of the berm remaining as a, it's there today, there seems to be an understanding. What, I mean, have you had discussions with the neighbors about that? Have you looked at alternative designs? Is it something you're open to? I mean, help us understand a little bit, because that seems to be, at least with the berm, on that, it seems to be the biggest point of contention right here with the project. And maybe elaborate a little more on your position. What's preventing you from keeping it? Or are there options to keep it? Enlighten us a little bit from your perspective.
The, so just in general, for the screening, the fences that are on the plan were not called to be removed. Corwell is interested in replacing those with new fences to provide the privacy, especially to the neighbors on the west and to the north. There's a slot on the north that is an easement that we couldn't build any kind of wall or anything, so that slot would need to remain empty. But the berm that's there today is twice as wide as the one that was on the original drawings. So it was originally 25 feet in plan view, and now it's actually 50 feet. So if that grew over time, or if it was installed differently, we're not sure, but it would mean a reduction of 10,000 square feet to the building if it was to remain in place. So it...
I mean, that's if you keep the same parking concept, right? Where you have parking spots up to the north?
Yeah.
But if you were to, and I don't know the width of a, what do we typically do, 20 feet? I mean, I can't, my eyes are getting bad here in the drawing, but, I mean, yes, of course, with your current design, that makes sense that you would have to shrink the building to keep everything the same.
Right.
But if you were to change the parking design, is there a way you could accommodate the existing berm or most of it and preserve, you know, the vegetation and the trees and things like that, aside from all the legal concerns and all of that, but just from a design point of view? Seemingly, there's been also a remark that, you know, I don't want to say this is overparked, but, you know, the city requirement is, what was it, Mr. Murphy, 266 versus...
If I could address that, I don't think that it's overparked. The way the calculations were run, the first floor was the medical office building ratio, and the second floor was all calculated as the clinical outpatient, but only half of the second floor is being used for a surgery center. So the other half would be medical office. So when you do the numbers at that ratio, we're right on the number of parking spots. So we do not feel like there's any to be lost in that they would all be needed. If we were to take out those, what is it, 20 some?
26 spaces.
26 spaces there, and leave the driveline, and leave the building where it is, and build, say, a retaining wall to prop up half of the berm, the original?
The south half.
Yeah, or keep the north half of the berm.
Yeah, keep the north half and the south half.
I mean, that's the only creative thing that we can think of, but you would still have to take out the trees and everything else in it, so I don't know that it's worth keeping half of a berm.
Ms. Charles.
Was Corwell aware of this agreement when you started this project? It just came out of nowhere. How'd you find out about it to the...
I didn't think we knew about it. It was discovered along the way, in recent months.
Okay. So you weren't aware of it, they were aware of it, and all of a sudden, the berm's gone. Okay. This is my personal feeling of all my years of involvement, especially with Beaumont. Beaumont's word was "their bond." And if they said they were going to keep this berm in place, then that berm was going to stay in place. We're working with a different player now. And so what I'm going to ask is, how much are you willing to go to work with the neighbors to try to come up with a compromise? Because the question would apply to the neighbors, stupid.
I'll speak up. Hi, good evening. Dr. Dan Carey, cardiologist, president of Corwell Health, William Beaumont University Hospital. Just for a point in fact, I did convene the group in September in good faith. We contacted the folks that we had access to, we asked to get the word out, good faith connection. A number of folks did show up. We realized that folks on the north side, only when we called a meeting again, point in fact, I called the meeting again last month, not the group. Maybe two letters crossed in the mail simultaneously. Good faith to get together. I was personally not aware of that the berm was there. My understanding was that was a temporary agreement until a permanent site was put and a proper border between the property. When we got the group together last week, the group's on the west side, there are five properties primarily on the north, five properties on the west. The issues that I heard, maybe not, they listened, but they didn't hear, but I think we heard and listened, but didn't fully agree about abandoning our project because of that new question. We did look into it, and what we interpreted at this, up till this point, was that that was until a proper border between the development, when it did occur, consistent with city ordinances. The group on the west side, it was all about the fencing. Would you maintain the fencing? And the group on the north side, it wasn't so much fencing, it was the berm. And the berm now goes 46 feet from the property line into the property. So to preserve the berm is really to take away the last piece of open land that we have access to, to create what will be a fantastic project for the community, not just for Royal Oak, but for this area in terms of providing outpatient surgical services, 88,000 square feet of medical office space. And again, away from the congestion across the street, and frankly, a great tenant, local, excuse me, a great neighbor, because it's not like the hospital, there's not helicopters coming into the site. It's a, primarily a Monday through Friday, Saturday morning site. So that was the, the question that you asked was, we're certainly willing to work with the neighbors on proper fencing and walls on the north and west side. The real question was, we're willing to abandon 10,000 or 20,000 square feet and preserve a berm that is, appears to have grown over time, 46 feet into the property, when our design has very good setbacks. You know, that what we heard in September was, we care about lighting, we care about noise, we care about 18-wheelers coming into the property, and we've addressed all those. We have zero light emissions beyond the property line. We showed those last month. We are willing to talk about the type of fencing or wall to provide that privacy. We are adding lots of green space and putting not, you know, two-foot scrubs, but you were saying what the height of the, the evergreens, so that ever provide year-round privacy. So in terms of working with the property owners and our neighbors, was really around that wall. Kind of a non-starter was not to consider 46 feet into the property. That would greatly limit the type of project that we could put forward, and that we did, that from our perspective appeared to be an agreement about a barrier until the project was developed and that a proper barrier, and that we proposed to install now. But we're happy to talk about more trees.
I hear you. That's kind of the answer I expected. You've got no negative condition, or I just figured that was the answer. What I was really going for is, someone said that it was originally 25-foot, and then now it's grown to 46-foot. Is there a way to take what we've got there now, with the landscaping they've got, the trees they've got, everything you've done there, and try to downsize that berm so they can fit what they need distributing from the shrubs, the berm? Downsize it to maybe 25-foot where it was, or something if the neighbors would agree? But again, the bottom line is, it's your property, and we can't force you to do this. All I'm saying is that the Beaumont Health System, for as long as I've been at Royal Oak, it's, you know, it's 72 years, they've always been a good neighbor. And like I say, their word was "their bond," and these people were promised this berm. Now, you guys coming in, this is all brand-new, it's a whole new hospital. I'm hoping that some minds could get together and say, "Let's redesign this berm so it'll fit their needs," and they still have the, you know, I understand their sprinkler systems in that berm, too. So, I mean, there's a lot of stuff, they just go in there to try to appease the neighbors that they've still got at least some semblance of what they thought they were going to have, and accomplishes. Because I keep hearing talks about fences and walls, and if I had a berm like that in my backyard, I'd shoot them with my fence. But I don't know, and I don't know if your plan has got the room for it, because I hear questions of sometimes you need, you may need this parking, you may not need this parking, and...
A little comment about the so-called "not needed" parking. The term was overflow parking.
Yeah, okay.
Which is not the same as not need parking.
Okay. The last thing we wanted was someone dropping off their loved one for surgery and spending half an hour driving around hoping a parking spot opens up.
Is there any parking that can be sacrificed to accomplish this goal, rather than not need it? But I guess, again, and I'm discussing with this with you, and I've heard nothing from the neighbors, and whether they're willing to compromise to work with you guys. So I don't know where that gets us tonight, if we delay this a month, if you guys can set up a meeting and try to come up with a plan. Bottom line was, there may not be a way to do it, and then, so we have to go from that point on. I'm just trying to figure out a way so that we, as a planning commission, can give you what you want and what you need, we can make our neighbors happy. No one's going to get everything they want, but if we get enough, it's going to make enough people happy. That's all I'm trying to do.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Mayor, just one quick question, and I am not an architect, but, and maybe, you know, the sacrificing of 10,000 square feet, you know, and not any suggestion to redesign this, but did you evaluate options to go with three floors or a covered parking where the second floor extends out maybe over where the ADA parking spots are, where it's covered, and then you have room up top to, you know, accommodate more space, you know, in the backside or where you're adjoining to neighbors?
Three stories in a medical building would be over the height limit, so...
But what about extending that second floor over into the east parking lot, you know, by 5,000 feet? You know what I mean? Like, are there options that you played with that would accommodate, you know, without...
No, we, I mean, if you're asking, if we look at both...
So this was your, this was your first kind of run at it?
Right.
Okay.
So we are providing, I would say we are providing those mature trees that would have birds living in them eventually, and they will have that same kind of visual buffer. I guess the question is, if we put a wall in front of the trees, is that going to make people happy to put nice trees in the landscape buffer and then wall it off? I don't, you know, whichever way, you know, we're willing to do the fence in addition to the trees, so...
Keep in mind what they're proposing. Is it permitted use? So if it beats all the standards, we have to approve it.
Yeah.
The question really boils down to, is the landscaping and the buffer that's presented to you on the drawings, do you feel it's appropriate, or do you feel it needs to be modified in some capacity?
No, I think that's the question, you know, that I'm debating. Is it, is it a great buffer? I would argue it doesn't, you know, we see a lot of projects that come up here where you have harmony with the neighbors. The dynamics of every situation are different, and sometimes you can't achieve that harmony. But I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, if there are alternatives that might make the buffer more acceptable, I guess that's what I'm debating in my mind right now.
All right, and I know both you guys had your hand up, and I just want to, I want to make sure I clarify what the department just said, Mr. Murphy just said. We have the site plan in front of us, but the screening between the off-street parking and the one-family residential is going to be as it is in the plans, or as we determine. So regardless of the legalities of any potential agreement that we don't have information, we have, within our discretion, to require a particular type of screening. Okay, I don't know which one was first.
Well, I guess I had a question to Corwell, or maybe you can answer the question. How many parking spaces have you now inherited with your new purchase of Beaumont? There's got to be thousands upon thousands. And again, some people may have to drive a little bit across the street. There's, the excess parking and the impermeability of that parking and its impact on people is dramatic, and every single person is not going to need to drive up to the parking space in the door. And I like that you have the handicap parking, there's excess, a lot of it for this kind of medical unit. And I understand the numbers in terms of the tendency to want overflow parking, excess parking, whatever it is, but there is just too much from an environmental perspective, from a city perspective, from a carbon sink perspective. And right now, to get back to your question, Gary, I would propose that we would seek to retain this berm, have a, we're not suggesting that your plan for the center is bad, is a medical use, et cetera, simply that it could be modified to retain some of those environmental features that already exist to benefit both these neighbors as well as the overall community, and still have an excellent project, in my opinion.
Ms. Esprit.
Thank you, sir. So my first question is for Mr. Murphy. Are you comfortable with the parking calculations that your department came up with? And that being the case, that does mean that we are creating 48 excess spots to sort of allude to what Ms. Bieke just said. But my question for you gentlemen is very simple. Do you have a month, or do you have to have an answer tonight? Because what we're dealing with here is, obviously, there's, you know, two different opinions. I fully understand that this is a, an allowed use, and we are going to get over the finish line. That's the bottom line. But is it the seven of us... But is it the seven of us who sort of impose our will on everybody? Or can you guys come together with the understanding over here that we have to do something next month? Plain and simple. But if you guys don't have that 30 days, then you're going to be kicking it back to us. And, you know, if you guys could figure it out, it'd be a whole lot better than us telling you what to do.
Mayor, so...
Yes. I thought we were asking, it's just my...
We should inform the site plan with file...
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. Please don't speak at it. I'm sorry. So my question for you gentlemen...
So the question was for these guys.
Do you have 30 days or not?
They're convening.
Looking at my schedule manager.
Sure, what was the question?
Do we have 30 days, or do we need a decision tonight?
Hi, I'm Kevin DeChowsky. I'm with Corwell Health and Planning and Design Department. I mean, ultimately, we would like to reach a decision tonight as we can keep the business planning moving forward. Just a quick comment on the parking. I know Dr. Carey had alluded to this, that, you know, there's excess and perhaps overflow. But based on the, I don't know, Mr. Murphy, if you've gone to the actual floor plan or not yet, but right now, we've identified the ambulatory service center on the second floor. But if those clinical service lines happen to change a little bit or modify, to Tom's point, we could then be deficient in the ordinance if we eliminate parking from the site right now. So if the clinical use increases and the ambulatory or outpatient decreases, that changes the parking count to 1 to 200 versus the 1 to 400. So the parking could potentially be deficient if, in fact, the clinical service lines for this building do change. It's just another comment on the building. As we designed this, the ambulatory surgery centers, you know, in meeting with the neighbors and trying to be a good, good neighbor with them, there was concerns about the second floor and the clear-story windows overlooking some of the residents. Now, obviously, we can't design the building fully on the second floor not to have windows. It would be very prison-esque at that time. But we did place the surgery center on the second floor on the west side of the building. It takes the majority of that building that is spandrel glass, so that glass is not real. So there is no vision from that second floor on a good portion of the west side of the building, on the residents. So we did take some of this into consideration. Meeting with the residents, the west property line and the fence did come up. We couldn't make a comment at that community meeting. Mr. Butler did go out there the next day. He inventoried it, he sent us pictures, and we understand. We are willing to work on that west property line. You know, to put this very expensive development in there, to have, to one of the residents' point, a fence that is somewhat dilapidated, we don't want that. We don't want it falling down on all this landscape that we are going to put. So we're willing to work with the neighbors on that fence to go ahead and make it a more aesthetic-pleasing feature, so.
And while that's very much appreciated, it's not your answer. Yes or no?
For 30 days?
Yeah.
I think we just deny it until next month.
Yeah, I'll speak for Corwell. We, again, with the, preserving the entire berm calls the entire project into, puts it at risk for the size and scope of what we needed to do and the number of parking spaces. That said, we understand, and we want to be good neighbors before the project, we want to be good neighbors after the project. But I'm, so the fencing, the lighting, the sound, we're willing to talk about that, but if we're willing to give up parking spaces that we truly were going to need, and the worst thing we can have is a building where, I understand your point about parking, but in all due respect, may I react to your shaking your head at me?
Please.
The parking is across 13 Mile.
I know, and the 13 Mile should be slowed as well, and it's definitely a problem, but it doesn't mean it's not there.
The point was, we're trying to create much more consumer-friendly medical experiences than those designed in 1955, or 1965, or 1975 on the other side of 13th. So I realize you championed the parking over there, but we still want to make the right amount, the right amount of parking. The worst thing would be not enough parking.
To that point, can you talk to me about the sidewalk access? Because I have a hard time seeing where the sidewalk is along 13 Mile, so it's safe for people to arrive without a car.
I'll turn to our engineers and to our architects. But I didn't finish the comment. I'm sorry, I was, I'm sorry, I reacted to your communication. Yeah, I think, so, am I optimistic that we're going to reach a compromise that is satisfactory to the folks on the north side and preserves the majority of that berm and leaves enough parking for us to be confident we have the right number with the still development of the types of services that will be provided in the building? I'm not confident in that. That said, we will make a good faith effort as long as you understand there's a, there's a, again, the green space, the kind of, the evergreens there for a great period of time. I'm not sure we're going to reach the kumbaya moment in the next month. I will give it, along with my, my team, our team, the purple that I report to at Corwell Health, a good faith effort. I think that makes sense, but I don't want to overestimate our flexibility on designing a project like this that, that needs a certain amount of parking spots. And then I'll sit down and let them talk about sidewalk and other ways people can get here through city transit as well as through bikes.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a quick question on the parking. How many employee, employees will, how many spots will they take up on site? What's the estimate on that?
I don't think we have that number.
But in that mix of the number, the total number, you have patients, and you have employees, I imagine, correct?
Right.
So do we have any idea of how many people will be working there in the facility on a daily basis?
No, most of the business program that's going in is undefined yet, so that could...
But then how would we come up with the number of 379 if we don't have an estimate of how many employees you're going to have and how many? So you got to have a...
The city parking regulations are not based on employee...
Talk about yours. You put the number of spots in there, they're there in the drawing. That is a function of what you see, your patrons and patients coming in and their caregivers, as well as the number of employees in the building. It's a very specific number you've designed and put in specific. I'm just asking what percentage of that, or how many of those spots in your, in the number that you say we need these spots, were employee parking? Or four employees are in that number?
I think you're asking how we get to the mix of west and east side of the property?
I'm just in total. You have a number of parking spots that we can count. What's the 3...
266 plus...
No, that's the city number.
317 total.
317 on yours. You came to that 317 based on some formula. And that formula said, we expect to do these things in this building. We expect to need, you know, we're going to need these patients, and they cycle through so many hours, so many minutes a day. And then we have so many employees that are going to be parking on-site as well.
Well, yeah, so in our, we do a lot of medical buildings across the state for all clients. And the number that we use as a metric is 250 square feet per parking spot. So that's somewhere in the middle of the city's 1 to 200 for the first floor and 1 to 400 for the second floor. But in that, we don't break down employees versus visitors, so it's just a blended mix.
So it's a rough estimate?
Yeah.
A swag?
It's what normally works, is the 1 to 250.
Okay.
And does it take into consideration transit or other access points, or how close residents live to the facility? Your formula.
No, there's not usually walkable...
And again, I want to emphasize that we have a community where people live in close proximity. Hundreds of people, households live in hundred, what do you call, under a mile. And so that's an important factor for us. And as a health facility, the green space and the mature trees also should be a factor in terms of air quality for your facility, not just for the neighbors.
All right. I'm going to call on the department here.
Sure. To assist Corwell's team, can you individually and hopefully collectively express to them why you believe the, exists, the proposed screening is deficient? So what would, what would you like to see them come back with, if that's the way you're going? Seems like that's the discussion. Can you highlight to them what you think is deficient in what they've proposed?
I can, and it sounds like Ms. Douglas can.
And the truth is, I don't think it's deficient.
Oh, all right.
I, if we had any other proposal for a site this size with the degree of borders and fencing and plantings that they propose here, we'd be happy. So I, I mean, I frankly don't find it deficient. I will say this, I frequently drive friends to healthcare appointments on the north side, or the south side of 13 Mile, and I can never find a place to park. I mean, truly, I drop them off and I go sit at the, in the, by the grocery store and wait till they call me to pick them up, or I drive to the top of the north tower in order to find a parking space. So I don't think there's like this plethora of parking spaces available on the south side of the street for customers. Someone said this earlier, and I think it's, I will repeat, it's a civil matter. If indeed their residents have legal documentation, that they have a right to that property, that they have some sort of agreement, or easement, or contract, or whatever, I'm afraid this is going to wind up in the hands of the courts instead of here, because it appears that Corwell has possession of and the rights to use this property.
All right. And I'm, I'm going to comment. I, as I understand it, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, as I understand it was being proposed, is a 10 to, 12 to 14-foot buffer between the parking, which the lights face north, and there's going to be landscaping, but the fence is a ceiling fence that doesn't go all the way across. That's what I understand. Is that correct?
Well, there's a section, of the five houses that are there, three houses have a most decorative architectural fence, four-foot-high fence. The last two do not. There is no fence.
Okay. When you say architectural decorative fence, it's a...
Broadiron.
It's a broadiron. Okay, so the lights can go through it, is my, is my point. So for myself, I think if this was any other project and we didn't have the issues with the neighbors, I think we'd be talking about putting a masonry wall along where the, where the residential properties are. That is what I would be looking for, but I don't know if that's what the neighbors are looking for. But I'm just saying, that's what I see as inadequate.
In addition, there's a three-foot grade difference, so the headlights are three-foot lower than the backyard as well, and then there's the landscape buffer, so.
Okay, but it's still, it's still a fence that doesn't block the light.
Right, but Corwell is offering to put in a solid privacy fence along the property line in addition.
Oh, I thought it said existing sitting fence.
It's not on there.
Oh, it's not on there?
They have existing fences that are north of the property line. We're willing to put in a fence on the property line as well, in addition to their fence.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tresby.
I mean, sooner or later, we have to do something here, so I'm going to throw a motion on the table.
You're good at that.
Let it die, let it move forward. But it will also tell you my thoughts on this. So I would like to make a motion to approve the site plan 240405 as presented, with the contingencies listed by staff, with three additional contingencies that I would have. Trusting staff's numbers on the parking, I would propose that we eliminate the three beds of parking along the north, your Belinda area, there, there, and there, that is a total of 33 spots, still leaving you 15 spots in excess, in an effort to create as good a buffer as you can for those neighbors. If you, if, and I made a contingency for there to be a full masonry wall along the west property line, but if you already have agreed to that, but just to memorialize it as part of our... And here's the other issue that I have with this, and I've been wanting to say this all night. You sort of located the building smack dab in the middle of the property, so you have parking around all perimeters. And why didn't you push it all the way to the north and the west, so the building itself becomes a natural barrier, and push all the parking toward 13 Mile and toward the church parking, which is already existing?
Did you finish your motion?
Okay, so my question, so my motion is, I'm sorry, it's 11:30, I'm surprised, people. To relocate the building to the far northwest portion of the property. That's my motion.
All right. Is there...
Will we move the building?
Yes. The motion is to approve the site plan with the department's contingencies with the, two changes, I think, maybe three changes. Eliminate the 33 parking spots along the north property line. Include the masonry wall, I think you said the masonry wall only on the west.
One on the left.
Or did you just say that it was the, is that what you said? West?
You said west.
I did say west, yes.
Okay, and a west, and also moving the building to the, to the northwest corner.
Correct.
Before anyone supports that, I'm a China.
Go ahead.
Those are not standard contingencies. That's redrawing the site plan, which is, which is not something that we can, each individual in this entire room...
So I will eliminate that third contingency.
Potentially watching on TV, hopefully not. This Lauer is envisioning, I'm envisioning something entirely different in my head than what you are, or what he is, or what she is, or they are. That is not how site plans are approved.
Fair enough. So I will eliminate that third contingency.
All right. So the motion on the table is to approve the site plan as presented with the department's contingencies, except eliminating the 33 spots along the north property line and a masonry wall along the west residential property.
The west and north? The west and north.
The west and north residential properties. That's the motion. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a discussion of this?
Is masonry the only acceptable material?
That's the motion.
Again, if you had said, well, it'll take 30 days to meet with the neighbors, but something has to happen here, we all need to sleep, so yeah, masonry.
That's the motion.
And the, and those sections on the north, the one far west doesn't, is not in the place where the berm is today. So do we have to eliminate those spots in the upper, the northwest corner?
You said north.
Yeah, north. It's north. The north side.
Right, but if the purpose of that is preserve the berm, there is no berm in that western section.
The motion doesn't include anything about the berm. The motion says eliminate the parking spaces and put the masonry wall on the property line to the north. That's what the motion is.
Yeah, because the reality is, I mean, what you do with the berm is what you're going to do with the berm. You own it, we can't change that. The gentleman's agreement that may have existed with Beaumont all those years ago does not exist today. But eliminating those, that bank of parking with the 34 spots, whatever it is, will at least ensure that there will not be cars along that northern area to create a little bit better buffer zone for the neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor. So I want to just make sure I understand it. Hey, Commissioner Douglas. I want to make sure I understand the motion. Commissioner Douglas seconded it, right? Yes, up for discussion. Okay. So basically, when I'm looking at the drawing there, the motion is to put masonry walls both on the west of the neighborhood where the fences, the wooden fence, and also on the north, but with eliminating the parking spots, basically that border the north property line, and preserve whatever green space, berm, or whatever it is there. So there'd be no parking, but would there be driving access? Would there be, you know what I mean? I don't know what that looks like.
But that's my point, is that we have a land, very detailed landscaping plan in front of us, detailed set of drawings. The motion that's on the table, no details.
All right, so let me just do this, and sharpen a second. I'm just going to withdraw my motion if you're okay with withdrawing your second, and somebody else take a bite at the apple.
Well, actually, the motion belongs to the table once it's made and seconded.
Okay, so let's vote it down and move on.
That's correct. You have to vote it down.
Okay.
All right. Well, then I guess I want to make sure we know what the motion is. The motion is to accept, or approve the site plan as presented with the department's contingencies, except eliminating the 33 parking spots along the north side and placing a masonry wall, code compliant, a masonry wall, along the northwest properties, residential properties. Comment?
Make this real quick. Do we have to eliminate all the parking, or just the parking behind the residence?
It's only the 33 spots, specifically the 33 spots on the north property line.
Yeah, I know, I...
Yeah, I know, I think, and the last bank of there isn't behind any houses, if I'm not mistaken.
So there are, there are houses.
But that's not the motion, the motion's all...
I know, so I'm asking if the motion's including all of them.
Well, I think those are all zoned residential properties.
Just, just, let's go. We'll vote, we're all thinking ourselves.
Okay, so, does everybody understand the motion?
Yep.
All right, I'm gonna start, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Start again with Ms. Peakey.
I'm gonna say no.
Can I vote against my own motion?
You can, yes.
Then I will. I'm a no.
Oh, well, he's voting against the motion, I am too.
I am a no as well.
I'm a no vote.
I, I think no, 'cause I don't know exactly all points in the motion, so I'm a no.
Okay, I vote yes, I like the motion, but, all right, so it fails, six to one. Now what?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think, you know, not that I'm gonna play judge, jury, and executioner here, but I think for the sake of time and for the sake of not trying to figure all of this out, this important project at 11:36 PM at night, I think it's best that the parties get back together. We may very well come back with the same plan, and then we can make a more refined vote. I would recommend that, you know, Beaumont go back and, and think of some alternatives, and, and work with the neighbors, and you could see the indications from at least part of the table that there could be a motion to say, we want the berm in this, but we're not designers, and I wouldn't, you know, to Mr. Esri's point, it, it wouldn't be best for either of the parties, the neighbors, or Beaumont, or Corwell, for us to, to try to, to make that decision. So I think that, you know, if there are significant obstacles and you sharpen your pencils a little bit more, we very well could come back with, with the same thing, we could come back with something that is agreeable, or we could come back with something that government is at best at doing, which nobody's happy, but we are all satisfied to some extent. So I'm gonna make a motion that, well, let me, let me check with the...
Is it a motion to postpone? It sounded like a motion to postpone.
Well, let me check with our attorney. Do we, we need to do a motion to postpone? If that's the case, we can't, okay. As versus a continuation, okay. So I will move that we postpone this discussion to when both the petitioner decides whether that's next month, or, you know, two months, whatever their timeline is, but I don't want to restrict them to any timeline. If they want to come back next month, they're more than allowed to, so I'll postpone to at least next month.
It has to be to a certain time to postpone, so...
Or next month.
It's gotta be next month.
Can I say, you can't give a range? I can't say we postpone at least six months, but they could come in one month? No. Because then we're just gonna bring people out again, and then if they're not ready, you know, I'd like to say, give them some runway, and if they get it done in a month, great, if it happens to go two months...
So that creates a question. If we have a motion to postpone, and assuming the motion passes, and then we get to the next month and the parties are not ready to come back, can they ask for it to be postponed on their own volition? So they would be in control of it?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so if the parties aren't ready, they can ask themselves to postpone.
Okay, so then I will move that we postpone until next month, and in the event that there's a change to that, they can petition themselves.
The motion is to postpone to next month.
Correct.
Is there a second?
There is.
Clyde, seconds. Okay, is there a discussion? Is, are we ready for a voice vote here? Or, Ms. Peakey, you want to...
No, I was just gonna make the comment that I really encourage the parties to come together, because I think there's a good meeting place, and again, I'm not, I'm not even gonna say it again, I'm just gonna, please let me vote.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the voice vote, motion to postpone till next month, the decision on site plan.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
There are no opposed, you are postponed till next month. Thank you very much for your patience.
Do we postpone with the same plan, or do we resubmit the plan? Like, what's the plan, do we resubmit the plan? Like, do they have the normal amount of time?
We didn't tell him you often. Call him. Yeah, talk to the department, but where's Steve Farley? Oh, okay, how long has he been at Habsburg? He used to be at Harley Ellis. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, just wondered. I knew, I knew him back in the Harley Ellis days. Actually, I knew, I think he worked with Art Smith when Art Smith was all on his own. All right, okay, well, tell them I said aye.
He actually had a great work ethic, he was a worker where he built a lot of the workshops, so did the interiors.
All right. You work, you work with Gensler frequently?
Yeah, we should have been there.
Oh, they, they forced you together. Well, very good, nice to meet you. All right, we'll be, we're gonna be right with you guys. All right, can the, if the Corwell people and the neighbors could take, take, go out to the hallway and close the door, would be much appreciated.
Signs, signs.
Signs. All right, the third business item here is a sign variance, SV 240404, 207 South Main Street. Mr. Murphy.
The subject property is downtown Comet Burger. It is located, has a mural along the entire wall that fronts along the public alley, and they did approach the Commission for the Arts to put in the, to paint the mural. That was approved by the city commission, and the Commission of the Arts didn't approve an entrance sign when they reviewed the mural. They didn't recommend the approval of that, and then the petitioner was informed that the mural wouldn't be approved with it. The petitioner is, as shown on the screen, they're proposing to install a sign on, mount a sign to the side of the building, which the mural encompasses. Under the city's sign ordinance, the entire wall becomes the background area for the sign, as defined in particular provisions in the sign ordinance. So the entire, that entire wall is counted toward the allowable, allowable area for a sign, and they certainly exceed that in doing so, so they're seeking a variance in order to have a sign that's painted on the side of the building and have one that's in excess of the allowable amount of wall signage. They have a distinct sign on the front of the building along Main Street, and that is not necessarily a flat sign, it's got some curvature to it, it sticks out further than allowable by the, by the sign ordinance, and they're looking to conduct some extensive repairs to it. In doing so, it needs to meet the sign ordinance provision, which prohibits a sign from projecting that far out and from having letters that wrap around the side, so they're seeking a variance in order to rehabilitate the existing sign and retain it.
Okay, and I, I have a question right off the bat. All they're doing is putting the sign back, like it is there, at the front sign, on Main Street, are they not changing anything? Their proposal is just to fix it as it is?
That's their proposal, and they can confirm that.
Okay, but then, and then they, even though there's no change, they would, just to repair it, they would have to...
Correct, when there are specific provisions in the site ordinance, they don't have that, nonconforming. Exactly, exactly.
Okay, very good. All right, let's turn to a question.
So I have a question, so it says here, I think I'm reading this right, repairing or replacing a damaged, nonconforming sign beyond 50% of the cost. They can do it if it's gonna cost less than 50%, or, what am I seeing here?
That's the, that is the statement that's included in the, in the ordinance, and so they must have expressed to the building division of the community development department that the cost associated with it exceeded that, and therefore triggered that.
Okay, they didn't share it with us here, but you're confident that it exists somewhere else?
If that was referenced, the sign reviews are conducted by the deputy building official, and those reviews are passed on to the planning staff, planning division staff, in order to create the report, and we use the same, same language that he, he reviews and cites provisions in the sign ordinance as to why it was denied, and we simply replicate that in the report that comes to you, so it must have been triggered.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Olson.
Not really a question, I just wanna make a comment, and maybe I can, we can get out of here real quick. From my personal opinion, fix the sign you got up there. I have no problem with, with you guys going in and fixing the sign. The only problem I've got in this whole request is the putting of the sign in the middle of the mural. That totally violates our, our, our Commission of the Arts ordinance about murals. You got a picture of it there somewhere, I know, I've got a picture here. There it is. You've got, you've got the beautiful mural on the back, and then they've got, you've got your Comet sign. I understand the need to direct people into the door, but we worked hard on, on that ordinance to put the mural, because we wanted to get artwork in the, in the community, and we wanted to separate artwork away from promotion signs, and what you've done is taken a piece of artwork, added your sign on, it's now made a promotion sign, and what I don't want to do is open the door for everybody else to come out and start saying, you let Comet do it, why can't we do it? So I'm not, I'm not against the, the, the sign you want to attach, I just don't want it attached in the middle of the mural. I don't want it attached to the mural at all, so if you've got another place to put it, that's what I prefer, but I don't, I, I will not support anything that's got that sign in the middle of the mural.
All right, well, I'm gonna, thank you, we're gonna have the petitioner...
I was trying to save all that.
The petitioner's gotta have their say, so first of all, sorry about the long wait, and please tell us why you're entitled a relief you're seeking here.
Yes, my name is Noel LeShine, the owner of Comet Burgers. Comet Burgers has been in the city since 1994, one of the oldest restaurants in the city. The sign that's in the front has been there since then. When I, every building on Fourth Street, if you go in the back of it, has a sign that you could, you know, a lot of my customers come through the back, so they, so if they don't know my mural, when I went in for a mural, this is the understanding that I got, when I went in for the mural, to draw the mural, because that's the Comet that I wanted to create. The reason that they told me that I couldn't put a sign in, because my front sign was in, 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 in compliance. Nonconformant. Yes, not because I did the mural, it's because my front sign was in nonconformant. There's a other, right down the street, I forget the name of it, that has a big mural, I forget the name of the restaurant, that has a big mural on the, on the, on the wall that soon as you pass the, the train station, it has a mural, but it has a sign right on the, on the mural.
I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with that one, but...
As soon as you pass, as soon as you pass the railroad tracks, the one restaurant that's on the right-hand side, the whole wall is mural, but it has their name on the mural. So all I, so when I got the mural approved, they said that I would have to come in and get a, a variance for the sign in the back, because my sign in the front is a nonconformant. So what we're trying to do is, is keep our sign, rebuild it, to make it look good, because right now it doesn't look that good, so what we want to do is be the oldest, one of the oldest restaurants in Royal Oak downtown, make it look beautiful, just like the inside is beautiful, but we definitely need a sign in the back, because we have the park in the back, we have the skating rink in the back, we have the hospital in the back, and my, my back entrance is one of my top people coming inside because of the parking structure and everything. So by having a mural there, they don't know that it's Comet Burger. And I get all that, I understand that, but the whole purpose of the mural program was to bring art into the community and not bring a fancy sign. That's why we separated the sign ordinance from the mural ordinance. If, I'm not sure if it was brought up in front of the Commission for the Arts, but, you know, they wouldn't approve that sign in the middle of the mural. Well, I was misled. Well, I, I wasn't there, I'll ask my wife, she's on the committee, she'll, she'll clue me in, but is there any other place on the back of the building to put the sign? The whole wall, everywhere is a mural. That's the way it was approved.
What about the door?
Where's the door?
The door is, so, all the way, all the way down in the middle, because I'm in between the, the, the...
Yeah, I, 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 first of all, let me start with this. Everybody loves Comet Burger, I think you're gonna, everybody's gonna vote that you can, I don't want to speak for everybody, we want that sign fixed on the front. You've got a cool mural on the back, wrapping around, it's an attention-grabbing thing, all you need is somebody to know that door's Comet Burger, right?
And the only way to put it is so, if you come out the parking structure, if you, anywhere you're driving, the only place to really that you would know that that's Comet Burger is exactly where we have proposed to put that sign.
Well, okay, that's the issue, because we would have to, that would be, we would have to grant a variance to plop that plastic sign on that mural, and I, myself, I can't support that, I'm gonna be wanting you to put it on the door, something on the door, rather than that, but you didn't present that to us, so I'm, I'm, I for one can't support that sign, in my view ruining the mural. But I want you to have a sign there, you just gotta put somewhere else.
So what if you did, what if you did a flag-mounted sign?
Flat?
Flag.
Flat.
Flag-mounted sign. So when you look at that building, this wall, the mural is here.
Where's the mural?
And that wall sticks out this far. This wall is set back, and then you've got a tunnel that goes down to the door. So what if you did a flag-mounted sign off this wall, by the door?
That's his door, there is his door here.
So that it hangs off the wall, it's still gonna be visible, but it's not physically on the mural.
Yeah, let me ask you this question, do you, of those pictures you have there, do you have a picture that shows your door, so we can, or shows the, the entrance, the hallway to your door, in those pictures you have down there?
No.
Anyway, to that point about the flag sign, what if you had the, a cloth sign or a flag sign that goes over that hall entrance, 'cause I think that would be parallel to the, anyway, again, we're not supposed to design, he can design, but I, I would support also the renovation of the front sign, and I would love for you to have a wayfinding sign here somewhere, but I agree with the other ones, we can't have it right in the middle of the mural, but rather closer to the door, maybe over the door, something like that.
I, I...
Not the door, the hallway.
I completely understand what you're saying, but the door is so far back, it's almost, I would say at least 20 feet...
Yeah, it's a hallway.
Inside the...
No, no, you are the hallway, like you're saying, it's the mural, and then that entrance to that door, I'm trying to picture it in my mind as I walk back through the lot.
There's, there would be no customers at all that would ever see that unless you just come directly... So what I'm thinking is, this is your wall right here, like where I parked to do the delivery. This is your hallway, this is the wall with the mural, come off this wall here with a flag-mounted sign. That's not my, that's not my wall. That's not my building for me to put any sign on that. The, the, the building that's mine is this. Turn ideas. So this is my wall here.
Yes.
So there's another, another building that's here...
Yes.
That I can't put nothing on their wall. This is the only wall that I would be able to put, but this whole wall is a mural. So what I'm saying is that I was misled a little bit, because if I was told that there's no possible way that I would be able to put a sign, then maybe I wouldn't have done the mural. I would have spent, you know, $7,000 to have this painted, but I was told that I could go get a variant. The only reason that they didn't let me put a sign here like this, when I put this in here, is because of my front sign, because the sign guy said that if you don't fix, if you don't take that sign down and, and become conformant, then we're not gonna give you this. So that's why we're here, is to get a variance for this, because of the front sign. There was no, there was no issue whatsoever or talk that I could not put a sign here. It was only because my front sign was inconformant.
Nonconformant.
Nonconformant, I'm, so, and, but if you go down all of Main Street, in the back alley, everybody's got a sign, but me. The mural, like I said, if you, I, and I drive every day, but I, the restaurant, if you're going, if you're going towards my restaurant, towards Second and Third Street, the restaurant right after the, the railroad tracks has the huge mural. They have a sign on their building, right on, right on the mural. So if they have a sign, I should think that I should be able to put a sign to it.
Okay, understood your argument, yes.
So you do have a sign in the alley?
No.
No, the mural took over that.
The mural, this sign, end of it?
The mural reps on the corner.
Oh, the rep... Oh, it wraps around, oh, I, okay.
So the sign above the trash door is no longer there?
Oh, that's gone. Okay, that's gone.
Oh, I couldn't tell.
The mural wraps around, it wraps all the way around.
Yes. Can we, can we, can he put his new sign above the dumpster door?
The mural wraps all the way around.
Oh, the mural wraps that too. Oh, shit, okay.
I think, if I, Sam, what I'm hearing is, and, and, I don't, I wasn't there, I don't know, but what, if I have to infer is that the petitioner probably wouldn't have removed that sign over the dumpster and replaced it with the mural if it wasn't his understanding that he could put. Whether that was, you know, actually what was adjudicated, but I understand that, I don't, I don't believe that the petitioner is providing any sort of false statements, whether that is the exact process and approval that happened. Because if I own this business, I would want to put a mural up. I think that's a great thing to do. I think it's part of being, having a community spirit and also, you know, adding coolness to a cool place. But I think I would probably say, well, I'm just not going to wrap it around over the dumpster door because that's, that's how people, that's my wayfinding. But now, all the wayfinding's gone and there has to be a solution. This is the solution they proposed. And I don't know if it's, you know, the, the best solution, but it's the one we had in front of us. But I, I do take the petitioner at their word that their understanding was that, just based on the dynamic, why would they get rid of that wayfinding sign?
All right, Mr. Gantina?
So would a, would a, a sign on the top of that parapet wall be within compliance? It's not on the mural, it would be above the mural. The mural doesn't extend over top of the parapet. That wall doesn't seem to be excessively high to where a sign above it on that parapet would, you know, extend so high that they may be out of compliance with the height restriction. Because I do see the issue of, you know, needing to have a sign be much further up into the alley to actually be able to direct people to where that door is way back in. The complication is that mural is the entire face of that wall on the north side, wrapping around on the, on the east side of that building. But if there were a sign placed on top of that parapet, it's not necessarily on the mural, but I don't know if that's in compliance with the ordinance or not.
It's probably a roof sign, but anyways, I'm not sure. Joseph is silent on this.
The same argument we made if we were to put a projecting sign on that vertical wall, the end of the wall, it's got the mural, mural on it. But if we put a projecting sign attached to that projecting out, it's not part of the mural, it's not, it's not showing up in the mural, it's showing up coming off the wall. It would hang over the alley.
Let's not, let's not lose track of the fact that we have actual variance requests.
Yes, the, I'm gonna just pop in there. So I, I had the same reaction. I went out there and looked at it. I said, that is a cool mural, it attracts you when you walk by. And I thought, I have a better solution. But my solution is not in front of us. Their solution is in front of us. And their solution is to put that plastic sign right in the middle of the mural. And we have to, we have two requests for variances. One is for the front, rehabilitate the front sign, and the other is to approve the sign. So I want to say that I think we ought to focus on that, it sounds like we may have to make two motions, but somebody probably needs to start thinking about a motion.
Can I make a motion to approve the request for the renovation of the existing sign in the front?
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Gantina, you just did. So this is a, this is a, one motion for approving the request for the variance to rehabilitate the sign in the front. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, Chair, hold on, we're on the side.
All right, but you, all right, I'm gonna just say, I'm gonna let you have a, a comment there before we vote, but what do you need to say?
Part of our request is to restore the sign because it's been part of Royal Oak for so long, is our request is to be able to take it down, do the restoration, bring it back.
I think whatever your request is, we're, we're moving to approve it.
And so, and you're moving quickly, but you get the discussion.
Yeah, we love that sign. As long as you're gonna bring it back, we're happy.
Yeah, I don't want to, you know, what I can do on site, on the sidewalk with traffic is not the same as what I can do in the shop.
Yep.
So I want to make sure that the board understands we've been moving it. I would like to put something temporary down while the sign's being serviced and then bring it back.
I think that's within the ordinance, is it?
It's a break area, it needed to drop in front of you, that's why we're here for both. So I want to throw that off before we vote.
Okay. Back to the, back to, thank you. Back to the motion. The motion is to approve the variance to rehabilitate the sign on Main Street, it was seconded by Mr. Gantina. Any further discussion?
Just add a line in there that the motion includes removing it and putting it back up.
Yes, I would like that. Please, thank you for your addition.
I'm gonna ask if that's.
So it's formally documented that we understand the sign will be removed and brought back up with a temporary sign in place.
So whose motion was it? Was it your motion?
It's mine.
Okay, so you're accepting the amendment?
I accept the amendment.
Okay.
And he's still saying it.
And he's still saying it, so okay. I'm gonna call for a voice vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're rehabilitating. Now, next issue. Is there further discussion on the mural issue? I, I've already made myself clear on this. I think there are better solutions. I'm just be honest with you, I don't like this solution. I think this is a really cool, attractive space that attracts your eye. I, I go down that alley and I, this is very attractive. There are better solutions, I can't support this one.
We're all ears.
I said, put it on the door, put it, put it on the door.
The door's not visible.
I, I respectfully disagree. I think when, I think you're attracted to the space and it's like, it's like the, it frames it, it frames your door.
There's absolutely, unless you directly know the sign at the hallway, you're gonna see Comet Burger. Otherwise, you will never know that Comet Burger is here.
Okay, that's, I, that's just, I, I don't, I'm just telling you my position. There are six other guys, people here.
I appreciate what you're saying, I really do. I appreciate everybody's input, we're open for suggestions. Now, if you tell it, if, if, if right here is no good, how about right here?
I'll make, I'll make one more quick comment. One of the things about signs, and I've been, we've been on the sign board for a long time now, merchants and other people who own buildings, they, they feel the more signs the better, they gotta, you know, it's, it's the bigger, the better, the louder, the brighter. I disagree with that. I think people are attracted to quality, design, and elegance, and sometimes less is more. And I think that you've got a situation like that. This, this mural is a little gem here and there's a lot of activity here. And I think that people do come by and say, wow, what's this? And they're gonna come by and they're gonna see Comet Burger, and I think that's.
Can I tell you something?
No.
My business has dropped since I took that Comet Burger off that wall.
Okay, all right, and I appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Esri.
All right, so we have a proposal in front of us, we need to take action.
Right, and I can't make a motion.
Exactly. So I will make the motion, and if it gets seconded, I'll explain my logic. I would like to make a motion to approve the second portion of the sign variance for the location of the directional sign inside the mural.
All right, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by the mayor. Okay, so we have the motion is to approve the variance to place the sign on the wall mural.
The reason I'm making this motion, I'll be very frank with you gentlemen, I came here tonight and I was a firm no. But I don't believe for a second that had you been fully told that, oh, by the way, if we wrap this mural around the wall, you lose that sign, you lose that wayfinding, and now you can't do a damn thing about it. I don't think we are necessarily being fair to you. Now, the reason I wanted to say no is because I don't want all of our murals to turn into signs. I think it's bad policy. I think you just sort of got a little bit of a raw deal, and that is why I'm willing to approve this. If the board does agree, that's certainly their prerogative, but at least we could take action one way or another.
Mr. Bicki?
I'd like to make a comment. Again, we don't know all of the details in the sign ordinance, which again, you can, on your own time. This, this sign that exists on this picture, it doesn't exist in physical reality yet, right? It hasn't been produced yet. Right, so if you look closely at our site ordinance, even if we end up passing this and giving you permission, if there's something else permitted that again could be above or on the side or retains the mural a little bit more, I don't know that there is. I would also suggest you might consider, even if we give you approval for this, again, considering the challenges with this whole situation. Because I do agree you should have some kind of wayfinding in the back, but there might be something within our ordinance that is a little bit more fitting than this, but still giving you the same wayfinding. I would tend to support this, given the longstanding business nature, given the fact we've discussed many different times with signs, especially in the downtown, some of the quirky nature of our local business owners that are not chains. But I do agree, and I understand to your point about trying to separate the signs from the murals, that that's currently what we have in place. So if you could find a slightly more appropriate, that would be a suggestion, not, not a demand. And then I think in general, our murals should allow some wayfinding, especially on businesses in the downtown. But that's not for this discussion, that's a general comment.
Okay, Mr. Ellison?
Can, the little sign you got there, can you mount that on top of the parapet wall? So it's, okay, so that can be done?
Oh, absolutely.
And Tim says, or Joseph says it can.
Not without a variance.
Not without a what?
Variance.
We can give them, can we give them the variance?
Chair, can we call the question, please?
All right, now I know what that means. Okay, is that, I, the question has been called, so I understand by rule we have to take the vote.
Requires a second.
Oh, calling the question needs a second?
Yes. I second it, I guess.
Okay. So that means we're gonna vote on the motion, which is to grant the variance as requested to put the sign on the mural. That's, okay, so I guess I'm gonna have to do a roll call just to make sure we get this straight.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes. No. So, what is that, four to three?
Yes.
Now's the time.
Okay, so the, the motion did not pass. Is there another motion?
Ask Joseph a question.
Okay. He's.
No.
There was four yeses? There were four yeses?
Four no's, four no's, it failed.
I'm sorry, then who was the other? I have Charlie, Woody, Gary as no's.
Jim was a no.
Jim, I apologize. Motion fails then.
Yes, okay.
Those variance requests are not approved.
Yeah. Joseph, a question for you.
Sure.
What's preventing us from allowing him to put that sign up on the top of the parapet?
There's a provision in the signed ordinance which states that signs that are put on, above the roof line are regarded as rooftop signs. And we don't allow rooftop signs in downtown. And they would need a variance request to come back.
Okay, well, we just broke an ordinance to put sign in the middle of that one, can, can we break the ordinance to put it on top of the parapet? Can we make an exception to that? I mean, for the, the side appeal board. Honest to God, I, I just, I'm really concerned about putting that identifying sign in the middle of a piece of art, because that's what we've got.
We had a proposal in front of us, I made a motion, it failed. I mean, with all due respect to these gentlemen, we can't sit here and redesign what they could do, the motion failed, let's move on.
I want to give Comet a way to have a sign.
They can call staff tomorrow and get direction.
Okay. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, very good. So we're.
Yeah, we can't until we see a drawing in front of us.
Where we're at right now is you had one approved and one did not approve. And so, since the, there was a motion to approve and it failed, I guess there is no other motion then.
We're done.
That one didn't pass.
Can we come back with another drawing?
You can come back with another drawing, yes.
I think that's probably the best, but the only other solution I would have would